Right, welcome everybody. That's good to know. As you all know, we've had a slight malfunction, I think is the phrase, with our flag. I thought it was Pethidius Alba, which is what we call Scotland in Wales, and that they were just rubbing in the last rugby result. But even better, we now have the proper flag for St David flying. So in case anybody was wondering where the Welsh dragon is, I'm here. And yeah, cheesy, I know. And just to say that St David's is the most beautiful part of God's own country, and I do recommend a visit. My dad, my dad, no, no, that's God's own county. My dad was the senior canon at St David's Cathedral and spent a long time there when I was young. So good to have all that stuff. And I don't know who gave me, I'm going to be like Dame Edna now, but without the gladioli. But thank you to whoever put the dafts here. Oh my goodness, that's Roger leaking away in the corner. No, I saw. Indeed, indeed. And this, these would be called Kenin Pedder if you were in Wales. All these interesting facts brought to you courtesy of your Welsh Lord Mayor. Right, so I've welcomed everybody and everybody in the gallery too. Can I ask the interim Director of Legal and Governance to announce the housekeeping arrangements? David?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Please can I request members of the public to familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery? In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from the security attendants, who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which would capture personal information or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech, and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. For safety reasons, please may I request the recording equipment is not held over the balcony. Finally, although there are no longer any specific Covid safety measures to adhere to, individuals are very welcome to wear a face covering within the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I shall now conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating there is to be one urgent item of business added at the end of the agenda to approve a change to the Members' Allowances Scheme. And finally, this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5.30, but I shall adjourn the meeting at an appropriate point to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. So item number two, apologies for absence. I've had apologies from Bob McCann, Gail Smith, Julie Grocott, Malachi Hayby, Peter Garbutt and Sophie Wilson. Are there any other apologies?
councillor Mark Jones.
Thank you, councillor Mark Jones. Is that noted? Thank you. So item three, declarations of interest or inability to vote on the setting of the council tax. Members have been provided with advice on the position on declaring interests in relation to the setting of the council tax charge. With that advice in mind, does any member wish to declare an interest in the item on the Revenue Budget and Capital Programme 2023/24 or declare an inability to vote on the setting of the council tax where they have council tax arrears of at least two months? There are none. Does any member wish to declare an interest in any other item on the agenda? I see none. Okay, we're now going to move to item four, which is Public Questions and Petitions and Other Communications. So I'd like to report the outcome of the collection which we held at the meeting, the last meeting on the 20th of February, which was in support of the Turkey-Syria earthquake emergency appeal. And we raised £400 just from councillors, which will go to the Disaster Emergency Committee because we know that the government has promised to match fund that. Other items I wanted to mention, I've, as you know, every week and usually most days of the week, I have a class from a different school come in to the Lord Mayor's parlour to read, to be read to, to talk about books and to eat cake, to try on the mayor's hat and other things like that. And I've had some very nice thank you letters from Brunswick Community School. So I thought I would just read a couple so that you can find out what the young people of our town, city think. So, Dear Lord Mayor, thank you for inviting me to your parlour last week. We were very excited to jump on an early train to visit Sheffield city centre. I enjoyed the fact sheets you read. I also liked the heavy gold medal and thank you for the lovely cake. Thank you for letting us visit. It was an honour to meet you. I hope to be just like you one day. We really enjoyed the cake. Thank you for inviting us to your chambers. I'd like to start by saying I enjoyed the experience and that I felt I learnt a lot from it. For example, I love to hear about what you do as Lord Mayor and how it's linked to what we do as school councillors. Another thing I enjoyed ever so much was looking around your chambers and looking at the mace and the sword. I was also privileged enough to try on your hat. After saying all that though, I've got to say the highlight of my trip was the cake. It was delicious. Yeah, there's another one about delicious cake. PS, the cake was delicious. And finally, Dear Lord Mayor, this is just fabulous, this letter. I'd like to begin by expressing my gratitude towards you. Last week I experienced an event that will last a lifetime. As soon as I walked into the grand hallways of the town hall, excitement surged through me like a racing car winning a race. The grand hallways, the grand staircase was exquisite and looked as though it was garnished in gold. If I had to describe my trip in one word, I'd simply call it phenomenal. I would just like to mention what a good Lord Mayor you are. I was very surprised to see the Wales rugby shirt top and the women's Euro ball. But these are great memories and you should keep them forever. No mention of cake on that one. So that's just a sprinkling of these. This morning I was at Intake School where I taught, thank you councillor Drabble, where I did teach the juniors to sing a Welsh folk song, it being St David's Day. And the infants all sang a song. No, they didn't. We all heard about the day that the crayons quit and we all had a very good time. And they gave me cake. There we go. Last time I did mention the fact that I'd been to London and I had seen the opening night of Standing at the Sky's Edge, which had been an amazing experience at the National. And following on from that, I think we all ought to note that Standing at the Sky's Edge has been nominated for eight Olivier Awards. And that's the maximum that they could be nominated for. Although I'd have found, you know, best Sheffield thing in London or something like that, I'd have added. So I just think again, it's reflecting on how strong our theatre tradition in Sheffield is and how well it has transferred. And finally, just moving on from talking about musical theatre, Dan Johnston, who is one of our Sheffield teachers, has won instrumental teacher of the year at the National Music and Drama Awards. And Dan works out of Red Tape Studios. And he also runs an inclusive youth samba band. And on the strength of having this recommendation, I will be asking them to come to the town hall to play for us in the reception rooms, not in here, before you all get too excited. But congratulations to Dan, I think, from all of us. Again, good to know that we are still producing excellent teachers. So with that. I knew it was a mistake to bring you in with me. Right, public questions can be asked and petitions can be presented at council meetings. We encourage questions or petitions to be submitted two clear days in advance of the meeting to help public attendance to be managed in a safe way at the meeting and to assist members to provide responses or answers. Petitions or questions received after the submission deadline shall be presented or asked at the meeting at my discretion as Chair of the Committee, of the meeting. For this meeting, questions will be taken from two members of the public. No petitions have been received. So the two questioners and the questions they've submitted are here. So can I ask, I'll say this in Welsh, Dylan Lewis-Cresser to ask, to come to the microphone and ask your first question, please? Is it working, that mic?
Sounds like it is. Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you councillors. Given the increase in LGBTIQA plus hate incidents and hate crimes with an increase of 41% on the basis of sexual orientation and 56% on the basis of transgender identity, according to the UK government, what is the council doing to protect LGBTIQA plus residents of Sheffield? And how is the council engaging with LGBTIQA plus groups in the city to work collaboratively in the interest of all residents?
Thank you. Good to have a Welsh questioner on St David's Day. And can I ask councillor Richard Williams, Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you Dylan for your question. I had a similar one last week. So the first part of my answer will probably sound a little similar for some of the people in this room. Sheffield City Council, South Yorkshire Police and our partners work together to make sure the city is in a welcoming and safe place for all local people and for visitors to enjoy. The safer Sheffield partnership has a statutory duty to address and reduce community safety issues in the city and one of our key priorities is to protect vulnerable people. The government introduced a serious violence duty on the 31st of January this year. This duty is intended to create the right conditions for authorities to collaborate and communicate using existing partnerships where possible to share information and take coordinated action to tackle serious violence. As a result of the question last week, I have agreed to meet as soon as is practically possible with members of the transgender community to discuss issues of concern. Taking the second part of your question, as part of Sheffield City Council supports the Equality Partnership, which aims to bring together groups who share protective characteristics under the Equality Act to amplify underrepresented voices from our diverse communities. As part of that, we fund LGBT Sheffield to coordinate an LGBT plus partnership. We also work with and fund Say It to support LGBTQ plus young people in the city. Additionally, we support a number of awareness raising events throughout the year in the city. For example, Pink Nick, LGBT Plus History Month, Trans Day of Remembrance and IDA Hobbit. And for those of you who are not familiar with IDA Hobbit, it's the International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia and Biphobia. And this year it'll be on the 17th of May. Thank you.
councillor Williams. And our next question is from Annie O'Gara. Can you come to the microphone to ask your question, please?
Thank you. In 2019, this council voted to recognise the state of Palestine. This was a welcome symbolic step signalling the council's commitment to international justice and its solidarity with the people under occupation. And yet, at the last council meeting, we all witnessed the silencing of the legitimate concerns of a Sheffield citizen as she attempted to read out a question regarding proposed twinning between the citizens of Sheffield and those of the city of Narblus in occupied Palestine. Will the council leader apologise to the mayor of Narblus for the council's lack of courtesy in failing to respond to the mayor's letter for over three years? Will the leader acknowledge that Sheffield citizens have a legitimate right to speak out about the oppression of the Palestinian people, including referring to the perpetrators of that oppression, the Israeli government? Before making his intervention in the last council meeting, did the legal officer consider the requirements of Article 10 of the European Convention on Human Rights, which is legally binding and which protects freedom of expression within the law? Why did the non-legally binding IHRA policy take precedence over Article 10? And finally, the council will be aware that the Israeli government is not the same as Jewish people. Indeed, many Jewish people in this city are emphatically opposed to the actions which the Israeli government takes against the Palestinian people. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Can I now invite the leader of the council, councillor Terry Fox, to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Annie, for raising those questions. There were a number of obviously points that I want to address. On the first point about being discourteous, I am writing the letter. I've just got to sign it off today and I will be sending that to the mayor of Narblus on behalf of myself and the council. On the second point regarding the involvement, I'd like to say that we took an active part last year in Powerfest. And we spoke with a number of community organisations around culture, around education, dance etc. And we took a real opportunity to engage across the city with community groups along that process. With regarding to the question about our legal officer, like I would do on any member of the public raising a question on officers, it is not my duty nor my right in this forum to speak to that. But I will write to yourselves in putting the written form to yourselves around that request of the second and third point of your question. So you will get a written response as well within that process. Hopefully that will be within seven days to yourselves. So if you leave your contact details as you leave, we'll make sure you'll get that written response as well. I have to say, I am at the beck and call like the other 83 councillors in this who take cognisance of our Lord Mayor, who chairs this meeting, and we take orders from our Lord Mayor. And if our Lord Mayor asks us through chairing of this meeting, we will adhere to our Lord Mayor. And I am assured that with our written response from our leaders to yourselves, we should cover all the points that you raise. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Fox. No, what I will ask is that if you have one, that you discuss it with councillor Fox after the meeting. Thank you. No, we're not going to do any of that. Thank you for asking. I am aware, I'm very aware of what the settlers have done and like you, I abhor it. But we are not doing a minute's silence. We're doing a council meeting here. Right. If we move on to the next item, just to say that I did have an emergency question which I have not accepted, which was asking about the proposed red lines on the Eccles Hall Road. And I understand that that is still under consultation. So that is an update for that person. Right, if we move on to item five, Members' Questions Relating to Urgent Business. There has been no questions on urgent business received from any member of the council. So we will move straight on to item six on the agenda. And item six is Street Trading in the City Centre. Proposal for a new street trading resolution. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. This item of business is to approve a recommendation made by the Waste and Street Seeing Policy Committee at its meeting held on 15th of February 2023 for the council to pass a resolution to change designated streets in Sheffield city centre from consent streets to prohibited streets. A report of the Executive Director, Operational Services, on this matter has been published with the agenda for this meeting. The motion is that the council resolves to redesignate the whole of the city centre, which is everything within the inner ring road, as prohibited streets and to confirm that the rest of the city would remain as consent streets as they are currently designated. The motion is to be moved by councillor Joe Otten and seconded by councillor Mike Chaplin. Councillor Otten, you may speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't intend to take three minutes. It sounds awful, doesn't it? We're changing from consent streets to prohibited streets. Like we're in the process of prohibiting street trading. And what we're actually doing is the opposite of that. We're having street trading in the city centre under the markets regime and the markets legislation rather than under street trading legislation. And that gives us more control of what happens there. It gives us more flexibility on pricing. And what we've done, what we've done as the Waste and Street Seeing Committee, the whole committee is behind this, is taken what was a budget saving we were given last year and made an opportunity of it and made an opportunity to have pop up street food markets in the city centre to increase the vibrance in the city centre and enhance the offer of the city centre. So the reason the wording is what it is is because it refers to, as it happens at the moment, if you can apply for consent for streets trading and, you know, you can have one. And for us to use the markets legislation the way we intend to, obviously the street trading consent has to, process has to be, has to be, has to be closed off. So that is why the wording sounds like we're doing something that's shutting down trade. In fact, what we're doing is opening up trade. And I hope, you know, I hope you all see the results in the city centre in the years to come. And I hope you enjoy it. Thank you.
Marvelous, light is still green. Councillor Chaplin, would you like to second councillor Otten's motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm more than happy to second this motion. I would like to add, and I'm not going to add anything, sorry, I'm going to add to what Joe Otten has already explained, that this has been to Waste and Street Seeing Committee, where it received unanimous approval from all three parties. All three parties are on board with this proposal. I also want to thank the officers who began work on this before our committee was set up. And formally, while ideas were being kicked around before then, in August 2021, officers really set to work to bring this to fruition. What we're doing here in Sheffield is not a lot different to what a lot of other cities are doing in this country. And the good news for the people of Sheffield is that it will improve our food offer. They should be, we should be able to present a much wider range of things to eat as people are going about their business or enjoying their leisure time in Sheffield. And of course, we're all acutely aware that it's important for cities like Sheffield to have a leisure side to it. It's not all about business. We want people to come to Sheffield. We want people to enjoy themselves here as well as to, as well as to work. So I commend this motion to you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We had a wee bit of an emergency going on in the background there, Mike. So does anybody wish to speak on this motion? Right. I'm going to take silence as the affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. Is the motion agreed? Right, okay. Just checking. Right. So there we are, that's been agreed unanimously by the meeting. I'm now, gosh, what time is it? Half past two. Right, okay. We were thinking this would take longer and that we'd now be saying now is the time for a break, but it isn't. So you've all had your papers and all the printed matters that you should have had. Can I just check? Can I also at this point say thank you to our IT staff and our staff in democratic services who have been running around like blue bleep flies, sorting all this out this morning following a power cut caused by an external source? I think we ought to give a round of applause to our officers for getting up here. I know, you're all thinking, oh, perhaps we can have the afternoon off. No. So here we are, the Revenue Budget and Capital Programme 2023/24. Finally, sorry, no firstly, we shall deal with a procedural matter. As regards this item of business and in accordance with council procedure rules four and 11, a motion is to be moved to suspend council procedure rule 17.5, content and length of speeches, to remove the two-minute time limit on the speeches of the movers and secunders of amendments and to set a new time limit whereby a total of 20 minutes will be shared by the mover and seconder of each motion. So if the proposer takes 11 minutes... So if the proposer takes eleven minutes, the seconder gets nine minutes, or whatever combination. We're going to suspend council procedure, sorry, it's proposed to suspend council procedure rule seventeen point six, time limit for debate, to remove the twenty-five minute time limit for this item of business. It's proposed to suspend council procedure rule seventeen point seven, procedure for debate, to allow the chairs of each of the policy committees to speak immediately after the motion has been seconded, and prior to the first amendment being moved, such that each committee chair will have two-ish minutes just to talk about their part of the budget. And suspend council procedure rule seventeen point eight, when a member may speak again, to allow a policy committee chair to also move or second an amendment, or otherwise to speak in the debate. Is that motion moved?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Is that motion seconded?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does everybody agree? Thank you. All right, hang on a sec. So we're now moving to the main business of this item, which is to approve a revenue budget and capital programme, and set the council tax for the financial year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. There is a motion to approve the recommendations made by the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee, and there are four proposed amendments to consider. The motion will be moved and seconded, and then each of the policy committee chairs will be invited to speak. The mover and seconder of each amendment will then speak, and the matter will then be debated. A document containing the budget motion and the amendments numbered one to four was circulated this morning, thank goodness, by, it went by email, did it?
It was actually about one o'clock.
Okay, about one o'clock, you should have all received your email with these documents. And it's also been published on the web with the agenda for the meeting, and paper copies have now been circulated. So the motion to approve the recommendations made by the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee at its meeting held on twenty-first of Feb twenty twenty-three is to be moved by councillor Terry Fox. May I invite councillor Fox to speak? You've got up to three minutes, Terry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I'd like to start by saying Sheffield is a brilliant city, and it's been an honour to be a leader of the council for two years. One of the hardest tasks I've had as leader, and certainly in those two years of no overall control, was in getting a balanced budget through, agreed by all eighty-four councillors, or at least by a majority of councillors. Lord Mayor, I absolutely toiled with an idea of how we were able to do this, and came up with the three greens, three embers, three reds, to be able to get all groups to a place where we felt that we could get to a position. I want to start by thanking officers for the time and effort that they put in to getting us to this point, but I'd also like to thank the chairs of all the committees for the hard work that they have put in through their toil in trying to get us into a balanced position. But more so, Lord Mayor, the one thing that has opened my eyes is the work of all eighty-four councils to get to this point. We've compromised, we've sometimes had decisions to be made, but I hope we've got it over the line in the most way before even January was a surprise to us all. And let's not kid ourselves, every one of us have had to make hard decisions, have had to make compromises to get ourselves into this position, and why later we will have our own views of what we believe with our own amendments should be included in this budget. You can't take away from the fact of the fantastic work that has gone on throughout this city whilst we have been in no overall control. But we've never, ever stood back from backing our communities, from backing our local residents. And when I say that, you just need to look at how we've rolled out through our Lacks, through the youth work, and also through playwork. We are now nationally recognised of the playwork that we are doing within this city. But also, last year, Lord Mayor, we had to stand up a major incident in this city, and it was accredited to the councillors in that area, but also the like, but also in this council, how everybody came together for those residents up in Stanington and in Hillsborough. And the community sustainable wardens of which we had backed played a crucial part in that role, along with like officers, and along with those major incidents. Lord Mayor, it is a budget, it is not probably one that we would have all voted for originally to get over the line, but it is a balanced budget, it has been agreed by all three parties, Lord Mayor, and so I recommend this budget to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's why he's leader of the council, bang on the nose of three minutes. Can I now have councillor Brian Lodge to second, formally second, I believe, this item?
Yeah, thanks, Lord Mayor. I don't know, but councillor Fox must be sitting and looking because I've written down a lot of things that I was going to speak here, and he's just read my speech out, I think, so formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
There we are, see, a great leader who also manages to do two speeches at once. Right, I'm now going, I'm now going to invite each of the policy committee chairs to speak for up to two minutes. I'm going to start with the co-chair of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee, councillor Angela Argentio.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The process of getting to this point with council budget has been challenging, to say the least. With the new governance system, all three main groups had had to work together. It was the first time that all political groups had cited the budget proposal from the start, and none of us can say that we've not been involved, as most of the proposals in this budget were rag-rated green by all three political groups. As the co-chair of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee, I want to say, first of all, I want to say thank you to my co-chair, councillor George Linda Hammonds, and the deputy chair, councillor Steve Harris, as well as the rest of the committee members and all the officers, the DAS, the finance team, the assistant directors, everybody in the committee. You have all worked emphatically, and more importantly, we have all worked as a team. We had a huge challenge in adult health and social care, as forty-seven per cent of all Sheffield City Council savings for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget had to come from us. We had to make some really tough decisions. We achieved this through the common determination to deliver efficiencies with a transformational new strategy and delivery plan that will unfold over the next four years and beyond. We aim to deliver better services with more choices for people, strengthening the market to ensure the best possible outcomes for Sheffielders. There is still an uphill road ahead, as the rest of the UK, we face a real staffing crisis in social care, and we are currently working hard to develop plans to employ and retain excellent care staff at all levels, by paying good wages and valuing our staff for the wonderful job that they do. I hope that we can build on the great work from this year, so that the sector can thrive and deliver world-class services for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Argentio. And our next person is the Chair of the Communities, Parks and Leisures Policy Committee, councillor Richard Williams.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Two point three million was our magic number, in terms of pressures to be met, and we did it in a timely fashion, primarily through the hard work of the officers, but also the grown-up support of each of the members. We had, it was a consensus all the way through. And I would particularly like to thank all the officers, all the members, but in particular Paul Wood as my deputy chair, and Mary Anne Elliott as the group spokesman. But there have been lessons to be learnt, and one of the major ones is that the policy committees do not work in isolation, and equally, the policy committees' budgets do not work in isolation. Achieving a cut in one committee can have a serious detrimental impact on the budgets of another committee. An example of this is the two hundred and twenty thousand pounds of pressure relating to a programme called Team Around the Person. If we had not been able to find alternative funding for this programme, and if it had to be cancelled, it is estimated additional pressures across a wider system would have been an estimated one point five million pounds per annum. The other note of caution I would raise is that beyond the day-to-day operating budget at the committee, there is a spectre of maintenance and investment costs in the park buildings and in the leisure facilities. Within the council's operating model, the park buildings are not the responsibility of this committee. However, when the buildings start failing, it has a direct impact. And that is why in the Liberal Democrat budget amendment, which we will be debating later on, there is a specific recommendation that the council should establish a specific fund to help and support assets across the city in parks like Rose Garden Cafe, like the Burlish Bath, and of course, like Stanington Pavilion in Stanington Park. Thank you.
Thank you, another person sticking rigidly to the time. Our next speaker is Chair of the Economic Development and Skills Policy Committee, councillor Martin Smith.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be brief. I'd like to thank officers and members of the Economic Development and Skills Committee for successfully delivering their cost-saving targets this year and supporting a balanced budget for next year. It's been a significant achievement in difficult times, and I'd particularly like to thank the major events and business support teams who have not only met their financial targets, but also delivered some amazing outcomes for the city. Hundreds and hundreds of local businesses have been supported, and the major events team have delivered some wonderful things like the Women's Euros, which delivered an amazing lift for the city, and was also, delivered a huge lift for the hospitality industry in Sheffield. I'm pleased to say that officers have also managed to secure significant amounts of new external funding, which has allowed us to broadly protect most elements of the committee budget in cash terms. The Economic Development and Skills Committee has the smallest budget in cash terms, but it supports one of the most important roles that the council has. Without the benefits of a thriving local economy, this council cannot deliver the other services that Sheffield needs. I'm pleased with the outcome of our budget discussions to date, but frankly, we need to do more in some key areas. With your permission, Lord Mayor, I'd like to address that during the main debate. Thank you.
And thank you, councillor Smith. Now I'm going to call on the co-chair of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee, councillor Dawn Dale.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will keep this brief. I will be recommending the Education, Children and Families Committee element of this council's budget as co-chair on behalf of the whole committee. First of all, I would like to thank our officers, who have worked very hard to ensure that we enabled us to reach a balanced budget in a very difficult landscape. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank members of the committee across all parties who have agreed this budget. The work put in to balance the Education, Children and Families budget has been done, as I've said, in a very difficult landscape, due to the ongoing national funding cuts and lack of investment in this city's children and their families. At the same time as there are increased demands on services due to the cost of living crisis, Covid nineteen, and the terrible pressures that our families are finding themselves under. What I can reassure everyone of is that throughout this process, we have ensured that the safeguarding of our children and their families has been at the heart of every decision that we have had to make, and that we have remained committed to investing in early intervention and prevention services. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dale, and I'm sure you'll all join with me in wishing councillor Rooney, the co-chair who has gone home, wishing him a slow but steady recovery. Thank you. I'm now going to call on the Chair of the Housing Policy Committee, councillor Douglas Johnson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's been said already, but it has, of course, been an incredibly challenging year. So just want to say thanks to everyone who's taken part in this. I know it's becoming a bit repetitive now because we're all thanking each other, but seriously, it's been really good, really good working in the housing committee. We've had some really positive stuff within the committee. Thank you to the deputies, councillor Baker, councillor Belbin, and to the officers who've really stepped up to the mark on this. I was just reflecting earlier on that in our committee alone, we've had a bigger saving to make this year than some councils' entire budgets. You know, it's a scale that's just huge there. And so, you know, office has been really good, right across the service, some really challenging stuff there, at the same time that they're actually dealing with, you know, day-to-day operations and all stuff. You all know about the housing repairs issue, you know, it's a massive operational job that's been ongoing, and, you know, our staff are getting stuck in there, and you've got to remember this is for the benefit of our tenants there. But when you look across the city, council housing is only part of it. We've got the housing revenue account, but we've got the private sector. The rented private sector in Sheffield is now as big as council housing and all the housing associations put together. It's grown. It's our role as a council to regulate that, and this is for the safety and security and health and wellbeing and affordability of residents who live in our city. I just want to say, of course, actually, just made the point that actually the housing committee has worked much harder than all the people who are not here, and our officers have worked much harder than everyone else's, because we actually got our budget passed two weeks ago, so, but there are some little bits to catch up on, and I just want to emphasise that although the housing revenue account was done a fortnight ago, there are some important bits that come into this budget, in particular homelessness, the private sector, and the housing growth projections for the number of, the increased number of dwellings across the city. And just bear in mind a thought for, we do still have hundreds of people in temporary accommodation, we're talking about homeless families, and when you think about the people in the city that we provide services to, you know, these are some really key people, and we really need to be proud of providing good quality public services. Thank you.
Two weeks early, but I think, was it one week late, Doug? I'm not a one for gossip. Right, the next speaker is the co-chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, councillor Mazriq Ball.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I also thank not just the officers that have helped put the budget together, but the officers that also serviced our committee? Can I also thank the members on the TRC committee for their contribution, but I'd also like to thank my vice-chair, councillor Christine Gilligan-Cubot, and the Liberal Democrat spokesperson, councillor Andrew Sango. It's been a, it's been a pleasure to work with them, and thank you for reminding me, Lord Mayor. I have a co-chair who's in Poland at the moment, and it's been a pleasure to work with Julie. But getting the pleasantries out of the way, must remind folks, and as we've all said, cuts, 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 and good to see councillor Chin Chen here, because this is the thirteenth year of your party, cutting services, cutting services across the city, not just council services, but public services across the city, and a good example of that is... And a good example of that is the bus service cuts. It has completely isolated many of our residents across this city. You've also compounded the situation on cost of living. But we have had some successes, Lord Mayor. We started our work on the route maps to address our challenge for net zero. Castle Gate planning application has gone in. Fargate, the work starts this month. And hopefully, we also open Pound's Park. We've seen a number of challenges regarding active travel and credit to the councillors in Walkley Ward, Nether Edge Ward and Crooks Ward for trying to make these happen. The final point I'd like to make, I was at a business meeting on Monday regarding the red routes for Ecclesall and Abidale Road.
We're on a red light now councillor.
And I'd like to say very quickly.
So I would like you to, thank you. And our final speaker, who. Thank you councillor Mohammed. Our final speaker is the Chair of the Waste and Street Scene Policy Committee, councillor Joe Oppen.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank members of the committee, particularly obviously Mike Chaplin, Alexa Diamond, the representatives of the other parties, for their work over the year in running the committee and in agreeing the budget. And the officers within the portfolio, I think, all have shown exceptional hard work and dedication and an ability to do things differently, an ability to innovate. And they've helped us go through the options and they've found ways of doing things differently. I think an example we've just seen is the street food trading proposal, which turned a demand for a saving into a better way of doing something. We've got, I'm hoping to see soon some results from the kenneling strategy agreed, which will again deliver a saving, but will mean that we will keep animals actually in better conditions where the council has to look after, look after animals. That's something to look forward to. The food waste trial, again, a piece of innovation and I hope that we can go further with food waste in the future. The Verge, the Verge strategy gives the city options for rewilding and for tree planting in verges, involving the community. There isn't, we're not putting money behind it because we don't have it, but if you can find the funding or if the likes have funding, then that's something that can be progressed with. So these are all new and better ways of doing things. And I'd just like to commend the officers in particular and the supporters of the other parties in getting some of those things done. Also, without much fanfare, we've given incentives for private hire vehicles to be cleaner. And the figures have started to show that we've got an uptick in cleaner vehicles coming into the private hire fleet, which will improve the city's air quality even before the clean air zone comes into force. So I'm particularly proud of that. And with Hackney Carriages, we've given Hackney Carriage drivers some relief from the burdens of the clean air zone in terms of the types of vehicles and the age limits, so that we can keep in this city a 100% wheelchair accessible Hackney Carriage fleet, which I think we would all support. So thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, we'll now go on to the first amendment. So can I call on councillor Brian Lodge to move amendment number one? You and your secondor can speak for up to a combined total of 20 minutes. I'm not sure who's going to be doing the timing on, Jason. Okay, thank you. Go ahead councillor Lodge.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I hope two minutes is enough for you councillor Nas. You know, I just want to record everybody sitting here, the committee chairs and the leader of council as he read my notes and say thank you to all the officers that have been involved in helping us put together the budget for this year. And, you know, also mention a couple of officers who have left, have moved on, that were involved in this process from the start of the year. I think Tony Kirkham has inherited the mantle towards the end and had to make sure we get this across the line. But a huge thanks to everybody, including Ryan and Eugene, that were involved in helping us to put this together and is supporting all the groups in preparing their budget amendments. For the first time, we've got a council with no overall control in a committee system. And I've said many times in this chamber, and I'll repeat it now, 84 of us are elected as councillors in this city and we are united in one cause. We're all here to do the best for Sheffield. We may have differences of opinion, but we are committed to delivering for this great city. We may look at different ways of delivering on some of those services, but we are all committed to delivering to this city. This year, more than ever, it's been evident with the work that's gone on through the committees. And so more people have been involved in discussing things through the committees. We've heard from the committee chairs. I just want to say a huge thank you to everybody that's been involved in the budget process across the whole year and across the committees. I suppose it's a well done for all of us. It's not been easy and we've found a process that's allowed us to reach consensus on many of the issues here. Not a budget that any of us would have wanted to deliver, not a budget any of us would have wanted to make some of the savings, but we have managed to do that and deliver for the city. And let's put that in context. The annual grant to Sheffield is now about £300 million a year less than it was in 2010. And, you know, it would be remiss of me for my colleagues if we didn't say 2010, that was when the coalition was falling, when the Lib Dems went into that disastrous coalition with the Tories that have heaped havoc on the country and on Sheffield in particular. In real terms, that's 3.3 billion. Thank you. I think Alicia recognised it councillor Nahby and clapping me for that. Thank you. That's 3.3 billion in real terms that this city has lost since 2010. Can you imagine what we could have done with that in the city? That's around £13,000 per household. £13,000 per household in 13 years from the austerity cuts that were implemented under the Lib Dem coalition with the Tories and carried on since. Labour have always been a party that put Sheffield first and will continue to do so. We have a positive vision for the city and our amendment builds on this. We have six key strategic goals for the city. A fair, inclusive and empowered communities. Strong and connected neighbourhoods which people are happy to call home. Tackling inequalities and supporting people through the cost of living crisis. Healthy lives and wellbeing for all. Clean economic growth. And happy young people have the start they need for a future they want. All visions that we brought through and we will build on and deliver for this city. So moving to our amendment. Our amendment has three key lines really. We're investing in neighbourhoods. We're investing in the likes. And we're investing in our communities. A neighbourhood investment fund of 1.4 million that's there delivering with the support of the likes, so primarily with the likes giving the guidance and things there, to help develop sustainable organisations through the city. We recognise that the likes are the best place for people to be making decisions. And we've said all along, devolving power down to the local communities. And this is an example of where we will move that further and move that 1.4 million into there. It's about delivering sustainability with funding to organisations linked into business plans. And if that means we need to help them support in delivering the business plans or in drawing up proposals, then that's what we can do. It may be bid writing, but the delivery will be there and supported through the likes who are best placed to work with this. Building on our support for last year for the local food access plan, we're adding a further £101,000 towards this. Again, supporting the communities that are out there that need the help in such as lunch clubs and things like that that's out there. So we've already established the food action plan, the food access plan. And this is building on the work that we started last year. We also recognise the work that People Keeping Well do in supporting our communities and the organisations that are out there. And we're putting a further £300,000 into the People Keeping Well programme. And I'm sure other colleagues will want to be talking about this and expanding on the funding we're putting in. We're also looking at likes where we hear about cohesion, community enforcement and cohesion. And it's the biggest problem that we seem to be facing with a lot of things across the likes. And we're adding additional support in there of a further £400,000 to support the work that's going on there in tackling antisocial behaviour, in helping to deliver neighbourhood action groups, in helping to provide that safe and sustainable communities and neighbourhoods that all our residents want to live in. But we're not just leaving it there in regards likes. We're also increasing the ward pots by £25,000 per ward. So that's another £700,000. So in total, if you look at the likes, we're looking at putting £2.5 million into the likes through our budget proposals this year. That's £2.5 million. But if we'd had that £13,000 per household, it would have been a lot more. We are committed to devolving down to likes and this is a firm example and puts the marker there that we will continue to do in that. But we also look at the other things across the communities. The district heating network that we have here. But Sheffield was at the forefront in delivering this and we need to expand and develop that further. So we're putting funding towards that to look to expand the system. We've also got issues with district heating networks down in the Mosborough Ward, in Westfield and Halfway. And so we're looking there with a biomass plan to see what we can do to support them in delivering a link up to the system there and supporting that. And I'll just briefly touch on some of the things that I've noticed in some of the other amendments there. And quickly, I'll just talk at the Greens one. The Greens just seems to be attacking everyone, attacking everyone budget. They're looking at putting parking fees up. They're looking at parking permits going up. They're putting targets for parking enforcement officers to deliver on a net income from there. They're looking at attacks on workplaces, which will get passed on, workplace levy, parking levy will get passed on to employees. And they're looking at attacks on the night time economy that Sheffield does so well and has achieved the purple flag once again. And if, one of my colleagues mentioned it and said, it's almost like the Happy Police, they're taxing everything. But if there's one area where residents can get some relief, it's going out to the parks, but they're going to increase the parking charges in parks. They need to be aware of the Greens that are hiding out there in your neighbourhoods. In the Sharrow, in the Broome Hill, in the Crooks, in Walkley, in Hillsborough, in Highfields, in Lowfield, wherever you've got residents parking screens, just get ready because the taxes are coming in for you. And the Lib Dems, you know, we've just seen, I'll just quickly couple. We saw last week that you were happy to promote a £130,000 salary for a chief officer, yet you want to attack the trade unions and cut the money there again. At a time that more workers needed to help and support them in delivering the changes that the council's going through. Blue bins, it's a bit of a lottery. If you're in the first 5%, it's almost a game show, fastest finger first. 5% can get a bigger bin. But let's not forget, what was the bin that you brought in the first place? Sorry, the blue box that you brought in? With the hairnet to stop things blowing out? And when you got criticised because it was all getting wet, you changed it to a shallicur. That's the volume that you brought in.
Steady everybody, steady.
I welcome your conversion to seeing that we do need bigger bins. I'll leave this now for colleagues to talk further, Lord Mayor, but I commend our amendment.
I hadn't realised it was show and tell council. Right. Can I ask Zahira to take up? Sorry, can I just ask Jason how much time she does have left? 10 minutes 48 Zahira. Thank you, you've delighted us enough Brian.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Firstly, I would like to offer my gratitude to all the officers that have supported us putting together the budget papers through these challenging times. I would also like to thank my co-chair councillor Lodge and members of the finance committee. This is the most difficult budget that the council has had to produce in decades. However, our budget amendment is focused on the core priorities that are important to the people of Sheffield. Lord Mayor, on this side of the chamber, we recognise the enormity of the challenges that face us in local government. The cuts in funding fall hardest on local people in the most deprived areas, increasing inequalities. This means that at a time of constrained spending, we have to concentrate on protecting our core services. In a future with less money, it is crucial that we spend money where it is needed to try to fix the broken promises of the Tory government. Lord Mayor, we keep hearing about levelling up, but sadly Sheffield has fallen down the pecking order once again. Our biggest asset is our diverse communities. We are trying to protect what matters to the people of Sheffield. We need Sheffield to be a great place to work, study, invest and live in. We are investing in our communities, we are investing in our neighbourhoods. This amendment will continue to support and enhance the work delivered by the local area committees. Over the last 18 months, likes have given thousands of local residents opportunities to share their voices, to support their local areas. I can think of many positive examples, such as the Community Fund Days in Firth Park and the Days of Action in Tinsley and Darnall. We are taking local people on this journey with us. This is how we devolve power into communities. This will help create thriving and sustainable communities and help build community cohesion. Given the scale of challenges that people will face this year due to the cost of living crisis, it is imperative that we continue to develop this plan. Lord Mayor, I volunteer at a food bank. I have witnessed first hand the marked increase in demand of food bank users. I also recently visited Foodworks, who do outstanding work for our city. This amendment will support such organisations. Lord Mayor, I applaud all those organisations who are delivering preventative services, such as People Keeping Well to support local people. We need to further support these groups so that they can continue to deliver crucial services. Bike libraries are good for physical and mental health. On this side of the chamber, we notice the inequalities between the affluent areas and the deprived wards. Therefore, this proposal will help give local people in neighbourhoods an equal opportunity to cycle and increase their health and wellbeing. Lord Mayor, last week, I visited a warm space in Darnall. I heard the horrific sacrifices people, residents in our communities are having to make just to survive. We know that times are tough for our residents. This will be a bumpy ride. We've got to be prepared to step up and not step back. We will, we have always, on this side of the chamber, stood up for the people of Sheffield and will continue to do so. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Nas. I'm now going to call on councillor Mike Levery to move amendment two. You and councillor Mohammed have got 20 minutes between you to make your proposal for your amendment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, that was an interesting speech from councillor Brian Lodge. I'd like to actually, I'd like to actually.
Thank you. Let's listen to councillor Levery please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to actually thank all the members of the final subcommittee who worked exceptionally hard in the last 12 months. Both members and officers, and officers in particular. We have weekly briefings and sometimes by twice a week briefings because that is the level and volume of work we've had to consider and take through in the last 12 months. But I really like to commend the officers because this has been a tremendous challenge for them to actually move from where we were when the budget was set last year to where we are now. And that's been no mean feat. And the processes that they've used, particularly the rag rating processes and the way it was managed through is a compliment to them and the way they thought through how this would operate. And we've arrived now at a budget which is balanced. But let me take you back 12 months. You remember, I'm sure, I have often spoken about how important a reserves policy is in this council and how the officers over many, many years have built up those reserves to make sure that this council can stay sustainable. And yet 12 months ago, the 70 million that was set aside for budget implementation plans, half of it was wiped out in one stroke because the Labour-Green coalition overspent. plans, half of it was wiped out in one stroke, because the Labour-Green coalition overspent last year's budget by £20 million, and could not put together a balanced budget without calling on yet more reserves of almost £15 million, just to set the budget. And this is with the expectation of delivering budget improvement plans of the order of £50 million. By June, we were looking at a £20 million overspend. And the way that budget was put together asked a lot of questions. For example, putting in place £2 million worth of savings to secure a new children's unit which hadn't even been built. This is a way this previous administration operated, just to balance the books and then worry about how delivery would happen after that. And that has been the problem all the way along. It's to commend the officers and the chairs of the policy committees that we have got this back under control, and that that £20 million overspend has been halved by period 10, which is a great result. And so, what have we said about next year? The Lib Dems have insisted that we will not set up a budget again that allows fantasy numbers to go in which cannot be delivered. We have said that implementation plans must show directly where they will impact in the full year, depending on the quarter that will impact on, and the savings will only be assigned against when that budget happens, so that we go into this year with much more confidence that we can overturn a budget and meet the budget challenge. Now, I'll just give you a little sentence from last year's budget about the halving of the budget implementation. The position is not yet critical, but stringent monitoring will be essential to ensure that reserve levels are adequate to cover future expected pressures in the medium term. £20 million is not sufficient to meet the medium term budget pressures, and we have to be thinking yet again on how we can restore those reserves and get them back to a manageable position. So, on to our amendment. Let's deal with the revenue side to start with. The lack of funding, and I'd like to challenge councillor Lodge on what he said about an increase, the lack of funding this year was a one-off spend. What we've actually done is repeat that one-off spend, and you've made the further recommendation of £400,000 on top of that. What we have said is that we should increase it by 50%, over and above that one-off spend for the decisions to be made in the communities about how that money should be spent. Lacks are about community-driven decision-making. We've had the first year of a funding application which has delivered projects within the community, and people are expecting that more will come next year. We have to increase the funds to recognise that that will happen, so therefore, per lack, £150,000 is our recommendation. Now, the second thing is, blue bins, always a cheap joke at our expense, we get used to it. However, more and more people are getting packages delivered to their door. The blue bins are filling up with cardboard waste, and more and more cardboard waste is going in a black bin. We have to make the first step within the finances we've got to start the process of getting larger bins in place. And allocating 5% is the first step that is affordable. We will then see how many people come forward to request blue bins, because that will inform us as what we are going to do next year in terms of this strategy, and we need to promote it. Now, I'd like to go on to capital. This council has got a dreadful record on capital maintenance. I don't think it's in the lexicon of the Labour group about what capital maintenance does, but I'll give you some examples. We have a £2.2 billion PFI contract on our roads, because we could not put capital maintenance into spending the roads, we just used revenue to repair them, and that's why the roads are in a dreadful state. We can look at the Sheffield City Trust arrangements, 30-year arrangements with no capital maintenance recognition, so the assets are running to the ground, and the council who underwrite it have to provide the funding to keep it going. And what's the net outcome of that? £100 million worth of borrowing, just to deal with the leisure facilities themselves. Let's move on to other aspects of this, and our actual assets out there in the field. Our offices that we own, our heritage sites, our community buildings, none of which have had capital investment at all for many, many years, and they are in a serious state of failure. The repair and maintenance department have said that we need to spend £300 million over 10 years to recover the situation with our community buildings, and heritage assets, and parks, and yet there is no funding there to do it. And what we're saying as a group is that we have to start the process of the capital funds coming in to enable us to look after our assets. We can spend £200 million and borrow if we can, we can actually through the HRA, but to keep up with our council housing, but yet we increase the voids target from 1.5% to 2.5%, which means that 800 homes which can cheaply and easily be made available are not put in out there in the market to do with people who need houses. It's time we got a grip of all aspects of our maintenance, and particularly capital maintenance. So, in our budget plan, what we propose to the key elements, we've already got the revenue funding for the family centre hub improvements, but there's no capital money there to deal with the buildings themselves. We are proposing £300,000 to actually sort out the family hubs and get them fit for purpose for the future. But secondly, we are starting off a heritage, parks and community assets fund. We've managed to get £688,000 in the capital lump sum to be able to deal with the Rose Garden café. We should never again get in a situation where a small business has to stop trading because our assets have failed. We know there is £48 million of the potential failures out there, and yet we're doing nothing about it. So our recommendation to this council is we set this in process and get it moving, because it's a vital part of the future. We might have got more or less on top of the revenue, but we're certainly nowhere near on top of the capital. So, with that parting message, I'd like to commend our amendment to the council. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Leverie. Can I ask, nine minutes, go.
I was the Benny Baker. Thank you, Lord Mayor, for allowing me to speak, and it gives me great pleasure to second councillor Mike Leverie's amendment. I want to first start by thanking the officers, Liz and Tony in particular, for the work they have done to help us reach this position, but also to thank the work that Eugene and Ryan did beforehand. And as Mike has mentioned earlier, and I'm not going to go into the detail of where we were last year, but last year was quite a shocking place to be. The fact that you set budgets using reserves, I mean, I don't know if economics is a strong field for councillor Lodge, but, you know, I'm not sure which, how many businesses use reserves to set an ongoing budget, because that is how you go bust. And actually, I want to say to colleagues, particularly those that weren't probably part of the senior officer briefings we were having before we had the council AGM, and it was stark what was being said, that, as councillor Leverie said, that £20 million had already been overspent by month three, and if we carried on at this rate, there was a real danger that actually outside intervention may have to come in. They're not my words, they were words of the acting chief executive at the time, Eugene Walker. That's what the budget that you guys had set was leading this city down. And what it required was people to actually get around the table and start to make some difficult decisions and some choices. And that's why I think myself, councillor Leverie and councillor Otten tried to do the finance committee, to start to challenge some of the officers and say, "You signed off these BIPs, why are they not being actually delivered?" And as we've seen, there were some BIPs that were never going to be delivered, and we've now been told that some of those savings that you agreed to last year might not be even delivered this year. So that's the scale of the budget challenges that you are leaving this city. So where do we find ourselves now? We find ourselves in a position where we're not using reserves to balance the budget, because we've been able to actually get around the table and make those difficult choices. And I thank each and every one of the committee chairs for doing so. But we do still have some choices, and that's what the debate will be today. And the choice will be, who else is asked to make some sacrifices? And there has been this sacred cow that's existed in this council for years, that every other cut is made, but those trade union officials that usually sit up there pulling the strings are the ones, they are that sacred cow that never be touched. And you see it again today, hitting back. You know, by all means, you're happy to make budget reductions elsewhere, but that sacred cow will never be touched. And the public needs to ask that question, and so do some of those trade union members who in the past have challenged me to say, "Well, councillor Mohammed, you're claiming my subs are not being used to pay for these trade union officials, so where are my money, where's my money going if you're claiming taxpayers' money is being spent?" And my challenge to them is, go and speak to your trade union officials. So what are the Lib Dems offering? We're offering actually real devolution. If you'd heard councillor Lodge there, you'd think that they were the ones who invented communities and councillors making decisions, but actually, we know, Gail and everyone else around this table, that actually that was community assemblies. The thing that you dismantled and you changed the name, there is no difference, the boundaries are identical. Please, I know Bob McCann's not here because all the boundaries were drawn up in my front room when Bob came round for a curry, when we ran the council in 2008. The boundaries aren't any different, actually there's not much change there, it's just, it was a Lib Dem thing, they couldn't stand it, even took their notice boards down, and now they call it local area committee. But the problem is, you can't do devolution, can you? Because devolution is about trusting people, and the problem is, the Labour's default position is to centralise power. So that's why we're trying to get more money down to community assemblies, oh, sorry, Lacks, and that's why we're increasing their budgets over in our proposal, and I hope local councillors from all sides will welcome that, particularly from the South West, who have been critical of us about how we spend our money. Here's your chance to increase the like and have more say, and let's see what you're going to do today. And the other thing that local councils always get is around the graffiti and the waste, and I don't see it in any of your budgets, but actually, fly tipping and graffiti and pest control is a huge issue in this city, and that's what we need to do. We also want to actually support foster parents, who actually help look after some of our most vulnerable young people, and that's why we have for several years suggested it to you, and you've not taken it up again, that actually we should reward those foster carers with a kind of financial reward in terms of thanking them, with a, you know, kind of almost a relief on their council tax. There's a number of other things we are wanting to do, especially to support our young entrepreneurs, and actually add more money to Launchpad. Now, what could be wrong with that? Why on earth would you want to vote against that? But that's beyond me, let's see what happens. And similarly, we also want to increase the mission around recycling, because, yeah, you can, you know, hold up boxes and stuff, but, you know, when people come to this city, you know what they say? The problem with this council is it keeps looking backwards. It keeps looking backwards, it keeps looking backwards. And councillor Wetherall, it sums it up. You know, you can hark back to the history, but actually what you need to do is look forward. What is it you're going to do? What is it you're going to do? Because things are changing, and are you going to respond to it, or are you just going to be playing the, you know, the jester in the chamber by waving an old box from 10, 12 years ago? Times have changed, and this council needs to change. Unfortunately, the Labour Party has to be dragged kicking and screaming for change. So, Lord Mayor, councillor Leverie did point out a key issue around reserves, and actually, this is something we have to keep an eye on, because we can't be dipping into reserves to fund revenue, but also actually, the heritage of our city is really important. You only discussed it last, well, I was going to say last month, a couple of weeks ago, but then we see what's happened on the ground, and it's not just the Rose Garden café, councillor Leverie, it's also Burley Spa baths that have been left. And I know councillor Baker would nudge me to say Stanington Park, and I'm sure there's many other council assets that form part of that £200 million backlog, of which 48 million is critical and essential. What we're saying is, we've got to start to make a start on addressing those. So those of you that care about the likes of the Rose Garden café, you've got a chance today to vote to actually protect those sort of assets by voting for the Lib Dem amendment, and that's what I commend to you. And finally, Lord Mayor, is there councillor Peter Price is there? You know, I could mention sporting facilities and the legacy. But I will, this year, I will this year, I will this year resist it, councillor Lodge. I just said I could, I could, but I'm not going to. But it might, you know, get Peter Price to jump out to his chair. So with that final note, Lord Mayor, I want to commend to all colleagues a fully costed, deliverable Liberal Democrat amendment that actually serves the people of Sheffield and addresses the real needs that the people actually are raising with, not just us, but all of you. So please, vote for this amendment. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, can I just seek a point of clarification, please? Wasn't the budget voted on by all council last year, and it was a council budget for the whole council that we've been operating this year?
I think that was a self-explanatory contribution there. Oh, no. But you will have a chance at some stage later, I think. Do you two, I can't remember. This is all very complicated today. I could do with Gail up here with me, actually. Right, thank you to councillors Leverie and Mohammed. I'm now going to call on councillor Angela Argentio to move amendment number three. You and your secondor may speak for up to a combined total of 20 minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, I would like to pay our thanks to all officers that have supported us, in particular the officer who worked on our amendment, and particularly Matt and Paul, who were very patient with us and worked very quickly. As said before, the process to achieve the budget proposal in front of us today has been tough, but has shown that politicians from across political divides can work constructively together. We have achieved remarkable degree of agreement. Necessity has truly been the matter of consensus rather than invention. I would like to thank colleagues from all party groups who have approached this process with sense of responsibility and goodwill, and I will not be negative about other people's amendments deliberately so. The things Green proposed today are the sort of things that we all need to do in the future. If we are to achieve a society that is sustainable, both ecologically and economically, it is not just the innovation of technology that will be needed to take us forward, but the innovation of ideas, being bold, learning from others and being the pioneers when we need to be. This will be necessary if we are going to face up to the challenges that the coming years will bring. The Green Party amendment seeks to start the council on a path to transform itself and the city we serve. Our proposal to establish a... Our proposal to establish a wholly owned council company providing households with services that often they can't get, but really need is not our own. It is based on a successful model operated by Oxford City Council. We want to use the model but adapt it to the priorities we have in Sheffield. So providing services like gardening, heating maintenance and replacement, installation of insulation and retrofitting of homes, provision of solar panels, et cetera. This will not only enable us to generate the income for the council, but help us to begin the path of helping people save money on the fuel bills and decarbonise the city. I'm acutely aware of the national crisis in the care sector, poor wages and working conditions and the difficulties in recruitment and retention of staff. This will not be solved overnight, but we want to make an important start. That is why we are calling on the development of community care cooperatives, which removes the profit motive, properly rewards staff with at least a living wage and provides care at a community level where staff and those needing care are all in the same place. This has been successfully put in place in Italy, where there are 15,000 social cooperatives that care for 7.2 million people, 12% of the population and employ 480,000 employees. In the UK, there are examples of community care corps, but it is a model that needs support and development to get off the ground. That is what we are proposing to pioneer here in Sheffield. Rising prices are causing misery to millions and we need to address this by reducing the need for energy, by improving homes and generating more of our own energy locally. We are proposing to help people to release the capital they have locked up in their homes to enable them to install solar panels with no upfront costs. This will enable them to get the benefit of energy savings immediately. Once that financial model is established, we will use it to help people to improve the energy efficiency of their homes through a deep retrofit with high energy efficiency and heat recovery ventilation standards. We currently pay £40,000 a year to an energy company to say our electricity is from green sources. Those green sources could include nuclear or biomass, both of which come with their own problems and dubious credentials. We want to use the money to help us generate more renewable energy in Sheffield, to help us reduce the energy bills, not pay for a badge which brings us no benefit. That is why we want to use those funds to train the next generation of renewable energy engineers working here in Sheffield. They could well be the same people who would have worked on the construction of large solar farms where we propose on places like local park and ride schemes, generating energy while providing shade and power to electric vehicles. Or they could be installing solar panels or other renewable technology on school, giving young people a practical demonstration of the power of green ideas while saving the school money at a time of stretched school budgets. New technology offer real promise and that is why we are asking for a significant trial of graphene heating for homes, sometimes referred as as electric wallpaper. This form of heating operates on a wider surface area, usually a ceiling, and so is able to operate effectively at a lower temperature. Coupled with solar panels and battery technology, there is the real prospect that homes could be heated both affordably and with low emissions. We want Sheffield to be at the forefront of this revolution. We will make it easier for people to get about in Sheffield. This is why we want more parking enforcement to ensure our payments are free of cars blocking the way for pedestrians, people in wheelchairs and parents with pushchairs. Children need to be able to get to school safely and we will support in the further development of school street initiatives. We want cyclists to know that their bikes will have secure parking, so we will be investing in secure cycle storage in residential areas. We will make it easier and cheaper for people to get into Sheffield city centre. And to help that, we are proposing free tram and bus travel for the four weekends leading up to Christmas. Public transport needs to be the cheapest as well as the lowest carbon option. All these initiatives and more could be supported if the council adopted an employer workplace parking levy. In Nottingham, over nine million per year is generated, a health support, public transport, active travel initiative and electric vehicle charging. These free apps cancel funding to enable the support of other hard pressed services such as adult health and social care, which is very close to my heart. We are clear that local priority are best addressed, closes to the communities the councillors serve. That is why we are calling for the ward pots to be increased, to allow better targeted funding to address the issues that people care about where they live. We also need to ensure that we help people in the direst need the most. This is why we have championed the increase in the half share fund and a further £200,000 for the advice services that help the people rely on. We work best as a council when we work together. This is our first year using a committee system in the context of no overall control. We have shown that while having different political philosophy, that we can come together in the hardest time for the benefit of the city. So please support our amendment. Thank you.
Well, Douglas, you've got 12 minutes to delight us. And you will.
Thank you, yeah. I was going to say thanks to Angela for explaining that. No, thanks to Angela for setting out all the things that we put forward in the amendment there. And it's a real opportunity to talk about what this council can be doing. But yeah, same thanks. I mean, I think it's really reassuring today to hear that there is so much consensus. And I just want to say, I mean, look at the other parties amendments and there's quite a lot in there, as happens every year frankly, there's quite a lot in there that we can agree with. Not everything, I just want to make that clear. But there's quite a lot that we can agree with. And we are talking about, well Angela used the word constructively, we've worked constructively. So there is of course a bit of difference, isn't there, between how we've actually worked in committees, in briefings, all those meetings that, you know, I know you spend time on when the cameras aren't on and, you know, to certain amount of the slightly more attack dog mode of talking when the cameras are on. But I think councillor Fox started off with actually a gracious speech about saying that, you know, we are here ultimately for the people of Sheffield, people who live here. And that's what we're all for. If you look at the budget papers, you know, there is a big chunk of stuff here that we're all pretty well agreed on. Not absolutely, there's loads of, loads and loads of cuts there that we don't want to do, but we are in a position where we're all taking a leadership role in this and recognise that we have to set a budget in the council. There's too much at stake to fail to do that. And again, the thing about who we're doing this for is the people who live in Sheffield. Not just, you know, one group that shouts a lot, but all the people in Sheffield. So that's where we're going on this. It's been different this year and it has been different because we've been working cross-party. Never before has this council got more or less to balancing a budget before Christmas. Never before has that been done with the agreement of all three party groups. And that's significant in previous years. Even last year, when the Greens were a minority party in the administration, we were in a different situation and, you know, the voting was a bit of a shambles in this budget. This year it will be much smoother than that. Just wait until last day, my words, when the voting descends into a mess later on. But no, it won't, will it? It won't because, yeah, we've done the background.
Because I'm chairing.
Exactly. So that's where we're going with this. But there is a call for more sort of leadership here. And I know that the council does deliver services like bins, the public knows that. We don't want to talk about bins. What we need to talk about is about some leadership on the big issues facing the city. And from our point of view, of course, you can't get a bigger issue than the global climate emergency. We've all signed up to saying there's a climate emergency on. We need to focus what we do as a council on dealing with the climate emergency because it's here and now. Last summer, we had those, you know, these incredibly hot days of temperatures we've not experienced before. That was real, that was on our doorsteps. And this week, you can't get cucumbers or tomatoes. And although that sounds like, you know, a thing to laugh about, it's actually a direct symptom of the climate emergency and increasing droughts and temperatures around the world. Actually, it's completely fair to say our global food supply is under threat. And we need to be taking account of that now, both in the way, the steps we take to reduce our emissions as part of the world and to set some leadership there across the world, but also how we adapt to climate change. So we've got some bigger things in there. We're looking at how we can do those bigger things like enable lots of people who own their houses across the city to invest in home insulation and solar panels. There's people there who've potentially got the capital tied up in the houses, but they need help to have a mechanism to get it out there. And it's our role as a council to see what we can do to do that. As you see, we've got lots of things in our amendment about, you know, large scale solar technology, renewables and so on, because it's not just about testing them out. The technology is there, but what we need to do, and that's all of us, is do those at And the people to do that are frankly the younger people in the city. And I did a really interesting visit to Sheffield College recently. They're really interested in developing a sustainability centre. They do already do a lot more teaching of a new generation of people to carry out those skills. Who are the people who are going to install all these heat pumps, put the solar panels on roofs? Who are going to do all these new forms of home insulation? Who's going to do all the work on the energy sprung models when it comes in? Who's going to do the technical modelling of natural flood management? Well, we need to train people up. And so we've talked about diverting some of the greenwashing money that Angela mentioned into training up skills for young people and supporting them in a career and supporting businesses for the future. So it's on that theme of leadership there, I just wanted to reflect on. I just want to say something about buses. And of course, of course, you'll love our proposal for a workplace parking levy, but actually it is the future, it's a way of bringing in significant sums of money if you want to be serious about having buses under public control. We've got, we want to get people on buses, so we've got a proposal to get free buses and trams in the run up to Christmas. It's about getting people on buses, try out public transport instead of jumping in the cars and getting them to come and shop in local businesses in the city centre. But we heard that, you know, Labour's big ticket, if you like, is about, you know, getting buses into public ownership. And of course, I'd just like to slightly on councillor Lodge's comments, I think the last time we had buses in public ownership is when, when South Yorkshire was known as the socialist republic. But of course, if I may, you know, there was a good public transport system. What's gone wrong since then? But of course, back in those days, I think Labour was derided as being a tax and spend party. And so when it comes to saying, actually, we do need to spend some money on this, it is for a reason. And fundamentally, this is about tackling inequality for all the people across our city. We're not just pandering to people who can, you know, drive big cars up and down the road. There are a lot of people who are excluded from that. And we need to face up to that if we're going to take any lead at all on dealing with the climate emergency, both here in Sheffield and across the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. I'm now going to call upon councillor Lewis Chinchen to move his amendment number four. You can speak for up to 20 minutes unless you want your secondor to have some of that time.
No, no, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd first like to join in the thanks to finance officers, particularly for their help in putting together my own amendment and their time and effort in that. Throughout this process, I wanted to be innovative in how we deal with some of the challenges we face as a city. And that meant building on initiatives that had previously worked well and also introducing some new proposals that will make progress on the priorities of the people in this city. With inflationary pressures and high demand on public services, there is a challenging financial context to this budget. And no doubt, we will continue to hear others shifting responsibility and accountability to central government. But the reality is that whilst the current government has awarded a strong settlement for this financial year with a £23 million uplift, the Labour Party still can't say whether or not they'd increase funding for local authorities. Why not? All talk, little action. Not only that, but the council is wasting hundreds of thousands of pounds on failed projects like the container park fiasco on Fargate and diverting time and money into building up proposals like red line zones on Ecosseal and Abbeydale roads that clearly do not carry public support. We need a council that is in touch with the people it represents. It should also be noted that the funding uplift does not take into account the funding that many parts of our city are receiving to level up our communities, including the £24.1 million in my own world in Socksbridge and Deepcar. Nor does it take... Did the Labour Party invest that amount in Socksbridge? No, I didn't think so. £24.1 million in Socksbridge and Deepcar? I don't remember, I don't remember the Labour Party doing that when they were in government. Nor does it take into account the billions of pounds the government has spent supporting people across this country with the cost of living, including huge increases in the household support fund for this council, direct payments to households, cutting the unit price of energy for households and businesses and additional payments to the most vulnerable in society. The amendment I have put forward focuses on some key themes, including regenerating our local high streets, mitigating the impact of housing development and making our communities safer and cleaner. Our high streets and local businesses were impacted heavily by the pandemic and many have suffered since with low footfall and inflationary pressures. They also continue to see changes in behavioural patterns with large numbers, of course, shopping online. But our high streets retain a USP that the internet cannot provide and that is somewhere that is welcome and attractive to shop. And that's why investing more in the street scene of our local high streets and providing urban green spaces will reap dividends as they become more attractive places to visit. Now, I therefore propose a £1 million fund for the capital investment and maintenance of these urban green spaces and street scene improvements. Another concern for many people in the city is the scale of housing development and it is not often so much the number of new houses that are being proposed, but often the location of where they're built and whether there is adequate infrastructure in place to support the additional pressures. And with regards to the latter, the community infrastructure levy is an important tool that we as a local authority can use to support communities where new houses are being built. And that is why I propose an increase to the local portion of the community infrastructure levy to 35% if the additional funds are spent or earmarked for a project within 12 months. This will ensure more money is invested in the communities where new homes are actually being built rather than being spent elsewhere in the city. It should also come as no surprise that many of people's concerns about the lack of infrastructure to support development revolve around transport. That is why I would like 40% of the strategic element of steel to be spent on transport related schemes so we can improve connectivity, reduce congestion and meet our zero carbon ambitions. And this is a proposal that would make a tangible difference, unlike the political stunt which is Labour's 50 grand feasibility study for bus services. We all know this is another meaningless feasibility study to give the impression that they are doing something when they aren't and their mayor isn't either. What on earth was Dan Jarvis doing all those years in office? Nothing. The government, the government on the other hand, has just funded a new bus service in Socksbridge and Deepcar through the Towns Fund. Socksbridge and Deepcar, a new bus service. You're proposing a 50 grand feasibility study.
Oh, 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 hang on, stop. No, I'm not even standing up, Lewis, it's okay.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. Now I want to move on to safer and cleaner communities. Road safety regularly features at or near the top of the lists in local police surveys, but a regular frustration is that decisions over road safety spend are often based on one metric, the number of past accidents. one metric, the number of past accidents. This criteria does not necessarily reflect the actual risk, and that is why I propose a fund of almost £2 million where expenditure on road safety schemes is based on more diverse criteria to assess risk, including local intelligence. Cleaner communities means getting a grip of fly tipping. There is no silver bullet with fly tipping. It is a complex issue, one that requires action from multiple angles and a mix of carrot and stick interventions. And one carrot-type intervention is to incentivise legal methods of waste disposal for a 20% reduction in the council's bulky waste collection charges. As with my budget amendment last year, I'm again proposing to expand our existing youth provision across the city. But this year, I'm also proposing additional investment in mobile, community-based sports provision to help fill gaps and ensure there is greater equality in health and wellbeing outcomes across the city. It is always a focus of mine when putting together a budget amendment to put forward proposals on how the council can be at the forefront of technological innovation in partnership with the private sector. A year on from my last budget amendment, and Sheffield still lacks on-street electric vehicle charging infrastructure, despite other local authorities turning their strategies into action. Funding for this therefore remains in my amendment this year. I also want Sheffield City Council to mirror some of the partnerships that other local authorities have made with the private sector. There's previously been a partnership between Coventry City Council and Jaguar Land Rover to see how sensors on cars can transfer information on road defects in real time to the council. And this is the sort of innovation that delivers more for less, reducing risks to cyclists and motorists whilst cutting costs for the council and reducing expensive legal claims. That is why I have included feasibility funding for a similar initiative in my amendment. In addition, my amendment also proposes funding to investigate a lane rental scheme for major roads in our city, where companies undertaking roadworks would be charged for the time taken and not just given a permit for a set period. This would be something that is relatively easy to change whilst delivering significant benefits in terms of reduced congestion and improved public transport reliability by incentivising the faster completion of roadworks. And lastly, my amendment, which is balanced by sensible and moderate savings, includes additional funding for the further rollout of free broadband projects to other social housing areas in the city. With public and private services increasingly being through digital means, it is more important than ever that we break down the barriers that prevent people accessing such services. And we will, of course, need to closely monitor the outcome of the current pilot scheme and adapt such an initiative as appropriate. I therefore take great pleasure in moving this amendment, which delivers on key challenges facing our city and shows that we are taking seriously the priorities of the people we are elected to represent. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
How much time has he left me? Hang on, hang on. Jason? I have nearly 11 minutes. Right. No, I was just going to say thank you, councillor Chin Chen. I formally second your motion, as we do here by tradition. And with all the excitement of all those amendments, I'm now going to suggest we have the comfort break whilst we all consider our speeches for talking about all the different amendments that we've had. So, what time is it now? Five past? Sorry, five to. Back by five past, please. Thank you very much. So when everybody's sitting down and ready, what have I done with my pen? I can see, yes? I have him. So far, I only have Alexi showing any interest from the Greens. Are there any other people who are going to want to speak? Greens, I'm talking about. Right, and I've got your list there. Oh, we've got to wait till councillor Miskell. I'm going to call councillor Gamble Pew to kick off this debate.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's nice to be back after a short break. A break can sharpen the mind and sharpen the resolve, and certainly for myself, sharpen my resolve to come back to this chamber and argue on behalf of the communities of Ecclesfield, Chapel Town and Parson Cross, and to speak up for our communities across Sheffield and to speak up for climate action, which is what I hope we are putting forward in our Labour amendment today. And of course, speaking of breaks, over these past two years, Labour has also had a break from overall control of this authority. And I think as Labour councillors, our resolve has also been sharpened and our will to deliver for communities in Sheffield has also been refocused. And our Labour amendment shows our forward-looking vision for Sheffield, backing communities through local area committees, through people keeping well and cost of living support, supporting climate action, an expanded shuttle bus service, an extended district heat network, cheaper bills, warmer homes and cleaner transport. Now, I know in maiden speeches, when you've first been elected or re-elected, you're not supposed to be too party political, so we'll see how that, we'll see how that goes. But I am actually conscious of the fact that with no overall control, part of our role today is to ask for the support of other political groups in this chamber. So I make that ask as humbly as I'm able to. We would like your backing today. And we know that the Lib Dems backed the Tories in 2010, and I know you like to, I know you don't like to bring up ancient history, but that decision has left this local authority £3.3 billion lighter. And so I would say to our Lib Dem colleagues in the room, please back Labour's amendment, which amends the budget and would also make amends for that catastrophic decision all those years ago. I would also say to our Green colleagues, please back our amendment so that we can tackle the network capacity to unlock the potential for the massive scaling up of sustainable energy generation and distribution that we need in our city. In this amendment, we are setting out our vision, our intentions for a forward-looking Sheffield, and we are asking humbly for Sheffield voters to come back to Labour and to back Labour. Because when you back Labour, you can be sure that Labour will back you, backing our communities, backing climate action and putting Sheffield first. Thank you.
Because that was semi-maiden, I have indulged you, but please can people keep to their timing so that we can get as many people in as possible. And I'm going to call on councillor Richard Shaw next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I guess semi-congratulations to councillor Gamble Pew on his remaiden speech, certainly rehashing some of the lines that we've heard before. I'd like to speak in support of the Lib Dem budget amendment from councillors Livry and Mohammed. In last year's Labour-Green coalition budget, £50 million of reserves were used to balance it, and at month three, it was already projected to overspend by more than £20 million. Lord Mayor, frankly, it was a shambles, and I won't go into, I won't really mention the £500,000 that was spent on the shipping containers outside the town hall. It's only with the Lib Dems being involved this past year that this overspend in the budget has come down. Lord Mayor, Liberal Democrats are committed to devolution and the new local area committees. So we are increasing LAC funding by 50% so that they can have £150,000 for revenue projects such as tackling graffiti, new road safety schemes and also supporting our local luncheon clubs. Lib Dems are serious about protecting our local heritage and green spaces, so we are introducing a £694,000 Heritage Parks and Community Assets Maintenance Fund to support assets such as the Rose Garden Cafe, Burley Spa and Sandy's Pavilion. We are the only party with a solid plan...
Right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We can whisper to our friends, but the word is whisper.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We are the only party with a solid plan to tackle climate change and reduce our emissions to net zero within the next few years. Our environmental initiatives include encouraging blue bin recycling, dedicating 20% of SIL to environmental and climate infrastructure, plus 10% SIL for active travel infrastructure. We're investing in e-cargo bikes for local businesses to transport goods the last mile into the city centre and many other things in our amendments. So thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Weatherall, if I see that bin once more, I will be confiscating it and you'll be standing outside the chamber. Yeah. You're so right, Paul. Or I could just put it over your head. Right, our next speaker is councillor Fran Bellbin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think the process of setting amendments to this budget should not just be about a few little add-ons to what we've already, what we're already setting out with the main budget vision. And I think councillor Lodge and councillor Nas have explained very well how the Labour amendment is very much about supporting the whole delivery plan that the council is putting forward. It's not about supporting a few little pet projects, it's really got to be about how we take the city forward and our ambitions for the city as we go into the next year. I'm really pleased to see that additional investment into those delivery plan objectives, especially around the local area committees and investing in our neighbourhoods. We're also investing in our voluntary sector, which I think has been massively important to us getting through the cost of living crisis. And I think what you'll find within this amendment is that we're looking for our voluntary sector to become more and more sustainable, because that way they can actually bring in the extra funding that helps us to support our cultural assets, support our heritage and support the different services that all our voluntary sector provide. So I do strongly urge you to support Labour's amendments on this. I'm also really pleased to see the investment into the LACs. As the Chair of the North East Local Area Committee, I've seen that as a real means of involving the people of Sheffield in a partnership about taking our city forward. It should, I'm really looking forward tomorrow that we'll have a local area committee public meeting where we'll be looking and talking to members of our community and our residents about what they want to see for this city and how they want to see our communities going forward. Last week, we did have the HRA budget, and there I thought it was great that actually the other parties did get behind the Labour amendment, despite the fact they might not have agreed with every single thing in it. But they recognised that we had ambition for this city, and I'm urging you to do so again today.
Thank you. Councillor Alexi Diamond, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to councillor Gamble Pew for his semi-maiden speech.
Okay, let's just decide now that it was marvellous and nobody else has to mention it.
Fair enough. So as other members have said, there are good things in each of the amendments today, and it's a shame that there is not a mechanism to adopt the best bit of each amendment. And over this year, we have shown that we can all work together for the good of this city. That is why I have to say I was quite disappointed with councillor Lodge's speech, which, you know, went for mudslinging, and I'd like to address some of what he said there. Unfortunately, I'm not old enough to remember when councillor Price, sitting next to me, supported proper funding for Sheffield's buses through progressive rates and levies, but I have read about it. Labour used to believe in progressive measures to fund public transport, but it's clear from councillor Lodge's speech that those days are long gone. Let me remind colleagues that according to the 2021 census, almost a third of Sheffield households do not own a car. This rises to over 50% in some of the most deprived areas in Sheffield. By subsidising and prioritising motorists ahead of accessible public transport, Sheffield Labour is waging class war on the poorest people in our city. Therefore, funding for public transport and active travel is an equality issue. But not only that, it's a safety issue. 32 children per year are killed or seriously injured in Sheffield every year. Sheffield streets are not safe for them to play in, as it was when many councillors here were young. It's not safe for them to walk to school, nor is it safe for cyclists in our city, as councillors know full well. Our amendment is also about the climate emergency, the most important issue of our time. We need to transition from private cars to public transport and active travel if we are to meet our climate commitments. It's no coincidence that in Nottingham, where there is a Labour council, they have an ambitious target of net zero by 2028, they have a workplace parking levy and public transport that is the envy of the country. Why is Sheffield's Labour so unambitious? Sum up, please support an amendment for equality, for safety, for clean air, for climate action and for the future.
Thank you. I'm going to call councillor Ben Curran next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to pick up on a couple of things that some other people have said. Councillor Mohammed doesn't want to talk about history, but our understanding history is important to understanding the context we find ourselves in for this discussion today. David Cameron failed to take on the right wing of the Tory party. He enabled them, and he was allowed to do that because Mick Clegg propped them up in coalition. And if that hadn't happened, we wouldn't have had Rishi Sunak at Coca-Cola in Northern Ireland today saying that they had won the great prize of being in both the UK market and the EU market, because the whole of the UK would still be in both of those markets with that prize. And councillor Chin Chen, the most deprived areas of our city don't attract SIL payments. So your proposal, whether you realise it or not, is to take money away from the poorest parts of our city and channel it into those that are better able to communicate, to contribute. And that's the worst combination of Margaret Thatcher's spite and this trust's economic literacy. But that's enough of that, Lord Mayor. This will be my final speech in this chamber after 13 years, so I want to move on to say a few thank yous. Firstly, to my constituents who put their faith in me four times and continue to elect me. I leave you in great hands in councillor Tom Hunt and hopefully after the election in council, hopefully in Laura McLean. And secondly, to the 83 of you in the room and the others that have worked alongside over the years. We often disagree, sometimes in an incredibly heated way. It's never personal, maybe with the exception of Paul Scriven, sometimes that felt a bit close to the vote. But I know the sacrifices that you all make to be here, and I've no doubt that you're all committed to the betterment of this city, even though we have different ways of expressing it. And I'd even say that about some of our UK councillors we've had over the years, not all of them, but some of them certainly, even though they were wrong on almost every occasion. And finally, I'd like to say a big thank you to the council staff, very much the Aung San heroes that we don't praise anywhere near enough. You improve our schools, look after our vulnerable, clean up our parks, whether you're supporting our economy, managing dull council systems and processes or whatever. You could have taken a different route in your life, but you've chosen to serve our great city. We can't, as a council, achieve anything without you. So thank you for your service. And with that, from me, it's goodbye from now and thank you.
Thank you, councillor Curran. We do wish you well in your next enterprise. And next, it's councillor Martin Smith.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to talk about one particular aspect in our amendment. Over recent years, I've read many reports on the local economy, and, you know, we have many strengths, but a continuing problem is the number of new business start-ups in Sheffield. We regularly rank right at the bottom in that regard of all the core cities. It really is that bad. Year after year, we perform very, very poorly. And that's why we, as the Lib Dems, we want to do more, particularly for young people who want to start their own business. And we want to do that by doubling spend on the Launchpad Programme and introducing a small grant scheme to help them get that first step to achieve their dreams. Lord Mayor, about 20 years ago, I was on the local business panel for the Prince's Trust. We helped young people to achieve their dream and start their own business. Twenty years later, whenever I come into the town hall, I travel past two businesses that were started by young people and are still there. They've survived, they've thrived, they've expanded, they've achieved their dreams. And I know that there's at least one member of this council who benefited from that scheme and understands why this kind of help is vitally important. Whether he thinks he's achieved his dream by being here, I'll leave that to him. Lord Mayor, if we want to achieve, if we want to get a successful local economy, we need to support more new business start-ups. And that in particular is why I support the Lib Dem amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. And next, it's councillor Ben Miskel.
Lord Mayor, I speak today in favour of Labour's budget amendment, a set of measures that puts Sheffield first, supporting neighbourhoods, focusing on healthy living and creating safe and cohesive communities. Each year, we sit here in this room, and for over a decade now, Labour colleagues on this side of the chamber have dealt with the impact of Tory cuts, both in administration and under no overall control. Cuts which people in my ward face a brunt of each day, having seen the withdrawal of 3.3 billion worth of funding in this city. That's 3.3 billion of service cuts, leaving lives stunted, opportunities lost and poverty increasing. Lord Mayor, our budget amendment seeks to put Sheffield first, and that's what we will do. That's what we'll do in order to keep our city's economy moving. And that's why Labour's national ambition for the highest sustained growth in the G7 is so crucial, and why we need to get money into people's back pockets in this city so that people can spend money in our shops, our bars and our restaurants. And it's in that spirit that I'm concerned about the Greens' proposals to introduce a late-night levy, a regressive tax on our night-time economy in Sheffield, a tax which will inevitably be passed on to our citizens, spending their hard-earned cash in restaurants, in bars and in nightclubs, a tax which will run down our city centre and drive away businesses and investment, and then a tax which will only, will only be able to spend about 30% of the money raised of it due to the restrictions on the primary legislation. Lord Mayor, in a cost-of-living crisis with everyone struggling, including hospitality venues themselves, it's certainly not the time for us in this chamber to back a misguided tax that will have a negative impact on trade, football and ultimately people's back pockets in this city.
For a minute, I thought you said it would affect football, but then I realised you said footfall, sorry. My next speaker, in his last speech before he has to be a totally neutral, well-behaved person, is councillor Colin Ross.
Lord Mayor, I'm always well behaved, mostly. Anyway, like many people have said before, I've got much more confidence in this year's budget that's been produced by the cross-party committee system under no overall control. And it shows actually that it's worked. The budget has had a number of very difficult decisions to be made, but each of those have been carefully considered, and we have as the core budget something that actually will work this next financial year, unlike the budget we inherited in the previous year. So I commend the work of everybody on the policy committees, and not least the officers that have supported us to get to those difficult but well-considered decisions. I'm now going to turn to the amendments, which add something. All of the amendments actually have some good ideas in them. The best ones clearly are in the Lib Dem amendments, but it's a pity if some of those are going to be lost if each amendment fails. I'm in particular wedded to the idea of devolving money to the local area committees. And I know that's been expressed in different ways in different budget amendments. So we need to have a mechanism where the local area committees can function going forward from this day. In particular, I wanted to address a couple of things in the Lib Dem amendment that I think are vitally important. First of all, support to foster carers. The education budget is predicated actually on 40 extra foster carer places, which not only gives those young people a better existence, a more stable existence, it actually is cost effective because it saves very expensive places. But 40 new net gain foster places is a very challenging target. We've had this in previous budget amendments, and actually I wish somebody would just nick our idea and go forward with it, because it's something that's vital to the future of many young people in this city, that we get these extra foster places. So maybe as these things roll forward, that can be picked up in future items. Very briefly, a simple one, insulating generals. A wooden door at either end of a general in terrace houses, you know, can help address cost-of-living crises. It's simple, easy to implement. Let's just pick up on simple things that we can do, very cost-effective as a way forward to address the climate crisis. Small steps can make a big difference, certainly to a lot of people. Thank you for indulging me, Lord Mayor.
I'll expect the favour to be returned next year, Colin, if I'm back. The general one, yeah, we're going to do that. Right, sorry, my next speaker is councillor Dawn Dale.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I feel slightly disappointed now, having worked really closely with Colin this last year on the Education, Children and Families Committee. And I am going to speak on the amendment, in the Liberal Democrat amendment around foster carers. First of all, I'd like to thank all foster carers in Sheffield. And I want you all to know that you are being listened to and you are being heard. And I appreciate the gesture in the amendment to offer a reimbursement for council tax for foster carers, but would like to point out that that appears that that's all it is. It's a throwaway line to cover all bases, because if you'd have done your legwork, you would already know what we are doing. We've just given all foster carers a small one-off cost-of-living payment. It wasn't a lot, but it was in response to listening to our foster carers. We are currently carrying out a full review on pay grades, additional allowances and incentives for foster carers. We are working with the foster carers, who we've met with, to consult with and work collaboratively with, to develop the future offer for our very, very valuable foster carers. But you would have known that if you were serious about supporting foster carers, devolving decision-making and working collaboratively. You've been very good at representing, you've had very, very good representation on the committee, who would be aware that we've gone into lengthy discussions around the offering of discretionary reimbursement of council tax. And it has been identified that this would be inequitable if we were to offer this across the city through our foster carers. So we intend to be more creative and offer a sustainable package to all of our foster carers, both current and new, and we would be happy to give opposition councillors a briefing on that. Thank you.
And next, it's councillor Bernard Little.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've been a councillor now nearly seven years. This is my second period on the council. The first time, 2006, 2010, what was very clear was we did have money to do things in this council. Not enough, not enough by a long way, but we did have more money at that point. Since then, of course, things have changed dramatically, not because of how Britain has chosen to go down this path, but because of the global situation. So, as a local councillor now, like all of us here, I'm always frustrated at not being able to deliver decent public services to the people in this city. Services that everybody deserves, to be able to provide support for people who've experienced the trauma of antisocial behaviour in their buildings and to their neighbour. Insufficient money to provide a decent bus service so that everybody can get to the town centre or get around their neighbourhood. It's disgraceful. We are the fifth richest country on the planet. It is a disgrace how we have run down public services. Sheffield, as a council, is like the majority of councils running public services. And it runs, unfortunately, because of central government, the way it dictates to us how we should run, saddled with an obligation to balance its budget. Central government has its own bank and its own sovereign currency. It's in a very different situation than we are here in Sheffield. It does not need to balance the budget. Rarely has it ever done for hundreds of years. So we are experiencing what is a callous political choice, that we as local councillors, dealing with people in our local communities every single day, having to deal with a crisis that is not of our making, but central government and unwillingness to face the political choice that we surely have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Little. I'm now going to call on councillor Jane Dunn.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will be speaking in favour of the Labour amendment for the simple reason, it's putting the people of Sheffield first, the people in our communities, the postal workers, the nurses, the ambulance drivers, the teachers, all of who are right now are fighting for their careers, fighting to put food on the table, fighting for their working terms and conditions. And what do the Liberal Democrats do? They attack the trade union movement. Because those people that are out there, we have all been applauding, we know that they need better-paying working terms and conditions, and they are the conveners. So why are we not leading by example in this council? Why are we attacking our own officers? Because they deserve the best working terms and conditions. And councillor Smith, you go on about small business. Well, we need a circular economy. We need our doctors, we need our teachers, we need our nurses to have more money in their pockets so they can use the small business. Because right now, small business is on its knees. It's on its knees due to the Tory incompetence, absolutely. And you do have to take some ownership over that, because businesses don't fail overnight. They have been chipped away over 13 years, and you have got blood on your hands there. So I will be supporting completely the Labour amendment.
Thank you. councillor Penny Baker.
And there I go. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in our budget, we put money in to increase very slightly the number of staff in private sector housing. It's something we've done over a number of years, and we've tried to do through committee but not quite managed, but going forward, it's something we desperately need to do. The people who live in private sector housing and have excellent conditions and no problems are very few and far between. And they need to come to us for their help and support to make sure their property is properly controlled in one piece, is safe, and safe is the most important word of all. So we have tried to put some money in there to support the thousands of people, more than there are now, in council properties or private sector housing. There's, I gain money, all of us, and why we can't get together and agree on this, I don't know, putting more money into community assemblies. It's the rap, sorry, that was a slip. Local area committees, that was a slip, I apologise. Putting money into local area committees, because that's where the decisions to spend that money quite rightly should be, and we now all recognise that and identify that. There's also one small item in here that I would like to just bring to people's attention, and that's the free buses, bus passes for members of Sheffield Young Carers Group. Young carers take a lot on, an awful lot on, and they also need to continue their education, or occasionally they've left education and they're working. And there's a lot of pressure on them, and having a social life is very difficult. I know from my own grandchildren that by giving them a bus pass that gives them the freedom of the city, more or less, that they can pop on any bus or any tram to get to friends or entertainment, has absolutely opened the world to them, and they see more of their city. So I would ask you to support that. So the red light's up, Lord Mayor. Thank you for being here, Lord Mayor. Please support the Liberal Democrat amendment.
I'll just inform councillor Baker that I have promised to take up that issue about young carers with the regional mayor. And can I now call on councillor Minesh Parek to speak?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As will come as a surprise to no one in this chamber, we're in the middle of a cost-of-living crisis. Energy bills have skyrocketed. Nationally, 50% of adults report that they were worried about how to keep their homes warm this winter. This is something I'm sure we've all had reflected back to us by residents in our wards. The cost-of-living crisis requires a cost-of-living budget. At last week's meeting, we voted against austerity-laden proposals to cut our housebuilding targets, and instead voted to build 3,100 new council homes through prudential borrowing, as well as establishing a £100 million decarbonisation fund to fight the scourge of fuel poverty. Labour's budget amendment today sets out how we can best mobilise the resources and powers available to us to mitigate the worst impacts of the cost-of-living crisis. For a local food access plan, investment in the People Keep Well network and funding for our local area committees will provide direct support to our communities right now. Through the neighbourhood investment plan, new neighbourhood action groups and sustainable neighbourhood offices, we will ensure the council's presence is felt in every part of our city. But as well as providing support right now, our amendment will also look to the future. By looking to expand our district heating network into new council housing blocks, particularly in communities experiencing multiple degradation, we can work to lower energy bills and carbon emissions for the long term. By looking to capture excess heat from the city's industry, we can work to build a more circular energy supply for residents and businesses. And because it was Sheffield's Five Rivers that powered our industrial revolution, it's only right we should look to further hydroelectric generation so our rivers can drive our green industrial future. Council, today's budget vote is not just about our budget amendment, it's about the level of ambition we have for our city. We can't just tinker around the edges. I ask you to vote for Labour's amendment to mitigate the worst impacts of the cost-of-living crisis, to show the people of Sheffield that we're standing with them, not standing against them, and vote for a budget amendment that sets us on course for a fairer, greener future for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is councillor Crossland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very pleased to be able to speak on the budget this week. It's just a shame that I wasn't able to represent my constituents last week. But don't worry, I'll stay on topic, so I don't expect any gagging orders. All across the city, we have a community, a community of litter pickers who volunteer their time to help keep our streets clean. Our litter pickers take it upon themselves to keep all our parks, neighbourhoods, streets, everything clean. I recently had a call from a litter picker in Beton. He said that he enjoys dedicating his time and commitment to the community, but throughout the years, he doesn't feel like he's got a fair deal from the council. Litter pickers do work hard and they need our help. With improved funding, they can help clean up our litter, fly tipping, dog fowling, graffiti, and that's what the Liberal Democrats are calling for today. We can give them the support that they deserve. It will also show those people who dedicate their time and benefit our communities that they are valued by us. They've done their bit, so it's about time we did our bit as well. Now, on the Economic Development and Skills Committee charge- Now, on the Economic Development and Skills Committee chaired by my colleague Martin Smith, I know that we're incredibly proud that Sheffield is now the second best European city break. But that's not enough, we want the number one spot. We're ambitious for our city, and that's why the council needs to invest in our communities if we want our communities to invest in our city. So everyone deserves a clean, safe space to live in. Ultimately, it's what people think of when they pay their council tax. So that's why I'm particularly proud of the Liberal Democrats are proposing investing £100,000 to keep our streets clean. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Crossland. And can I call on the founder of the council, councillor Peter Price?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I weren't going to speak until I saw-
I can call someone else.
No, 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 until I saw the amendment from the Greens, when they talk about introducing a night time levy on licensed premises. Well, as a regular user of the city centre in the evenings, I must admit, I go a little bit when people tell me the city centre is dead, because it means they never come downtown in the evening. Because I can assure you now, it is booming. If you go West Street or Division Street, you can hardly shift, traffic cancels and thousands of people that's in the city centre enjoying the lifestyle. The theatres turn out, it's not just kids, not just students, they come to enjoy the city centre, which is not a given, which is not a given, and it's very precarious and fragile. If I'd been listening to Radio 4 this morning, talking about the number of pubs that's closing down week after week because of the challenge from cheap booze from supermarkets, not from the city centre, and that's what's killing it. But we have a gem here, when the last speaker mentioned about city breaks, people coming, it's one top mention nationally, people come, they come to the city to enjoy it, to enjoy the city centre, and to introduce a levy could be the one thing that killed it off. We must be very, very careful. There's massive investment going on in the city centre now, and that's because it's attractive, and one thing, and students are pouring into, to university, because it's an attractive place to be, and the night time economy is a big part of Sheffield's economy. It employs thousands of people, keeps our taxi drivers in work, and works on right through the night, right till two, three and four o'clock in the morning, I know, because I'm often picking my kids up at that time. So please don't push this line, we ought to be proud of it. I'll tell you what, if Leeds see this, they'll laugh their heads off, so will Manchester, because they're our competitors, and I think we ought to be very proud of what's happening in the city centre at the moment, and its duty's creative, and what the work the council does to put events on to bring people in. And in five to 10 years' time, when we've got these 20,000 people living in the city centre, the place will booby boom even more. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
And anybody who is a friend of councillor Price on Facebook will have seen the photos of him enjoying the nightlife very late. Yeah, absolutely, a saga loud is absolutely correct. Right, councillor Ian Auckland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry to disappoint you last time, so let me mention Cognor Cottage in Graves Park. Cognor Cottage in Graves Park was allowed to go to Rock and Rui. Rose Garden Cafe, save Rose Garden Cafe, no to demolition, jolly good idea, Lord Mayor, but it is a slogan. And slogans do not a solution make. So I'm really pleased that the Lib Dem amendment has a solution today in our Heritage Parks and Community Asset Fund, which will help restore and repair buildings across the city. And, Lord Mayor, it's something that we have neglected, £40 million in backlog of repairs that are urgently needed, and now we have a proposal to make a start to do something, and we can no longer just sit on our hands and think there is nothing to be done, because other buildings will follow the Rose Garden Cafe and have to be closed because they're falling down and are unsafe. I'm a great believer in devolution, Lord Mayor, and I welcome the leader of the council's speech on this, but we would go further. Devolution means giving the power to the local area committees to spend their money as they wish. And where we are, very much welcome £100,000 to tackle fly tipping and graffiti, but by the time the central costs were taken off, that was a lot less, and then we had to prioritise fly tipping, maybe necessarily, but that might not have been our decision, and that money disappeared. And we weren't freely able to spend it, and I would devolve most services locally. The Labour amendment made me smile on buses if it wasn't such a serious thing. Labour have a plan to bring public transport under public control, and we have begun, Lord Mayor, mark you, we have become the, we have begun the work to make this happen. Well, what on earth have you been doing these last 10, 12, 20 years, when on this side of the chamber, we've had a plan all the time to bring public transport under public control through a franchise system? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
You will all be getting a vote later. Now, come on, through to Lord Mayor, or be quiet. I like that silence, I can hear. And councillor George Lindas Hammond next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In October last year, First Bus cut the 52A service covering Wiswood and Locksley. This cut was devastating, leaving local people without any buses in the evenings and Sundays, with only a skeleton service the rest of the time. For months now, local people have been left isolated, delayed and out of pocket. Since this callous cut, as a local councillor, I have thought to try and restore services, convened a public meeting of hundreds of local people, met with First Bus and with the mayor's bus team, but despite all this, the First Bus have refused to consider their short term decision. This is not the end. Based on responses from a survey of hundreds of local people, it's clear that a shuttle bus connecting Wiswood, Wodsey and Locksley is the solution we need to ensure that local people can reach the shops, trams and buses in Hillsborough. That's a pro resident, pro business and pro environment plan that can and must work. I'm therefore immensely pleased that today's Labour amendment budget will ensure that we work up this plan, and so I urge all councillors that along with everything else great that the Labour amendment contains, that you back this today so we can begin the work of restoring bus services for Wiswood, Wodsey and Locksley. Thank you.
That is my favourite speech so far, not because it's George, but because we're still on the green light with him. Well done. And can we have Sophie Thornton next, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm speaking today to support the Liberal Democrat amendment, which is, we are the only party to propose additional funding to tackle fly tipping and litter, and we're proud, we're all proud of Sheffield, so why not let's clean up our streets and provide a Sheffield that residents can be proud of. It's a budget that can ensure the future of our community buildings and provides real long term financial relief for some of the key people who foster and care for some of our vulnerable children. Not just a one off payment like Labour seems to want a pack on the back for, but real long term relief and a thank for the work that they do. And I spend a lot of time in this chamber talking about disrepair, and that this council hasn't done right by its council tenants, but in this city it's also left community buildings and our key heritage assets left to rot. The Liberal Democrat budget amendment is proactive and preventative to make sure that the roof doesn't fall down on any other community building like it nearly did on Graves Park's Rose Garden Cafe. Sheffield Labour are currently tweeting that £2.1 billion has been cut from local government budgets, but councillor Missick in this chamber has said that it's £3.3 billion. And it'd be really great if you could get your figures right on that, or figures straight on that. If there is a £1.2 billion funding gap, then maybe, you know, we could reinvest that and finally give council tenants some justice and get on to help with the council housing this repair crisis that you've provided, presided over for so many years. Now, I'm proud to back our budget amendment, as we're actually serious about devolving power and money so that local people can make decisions in their local communities. This is about trust, because Liberal Democrats don't believe that the town hall know best, but local people do. So backing our amendment today would mean that you're giving local people a real stake with real power and real money to make a real difference in their community. So if you believe and trust your local residents, then I hope that you will be backing the Liberal Democrat amendment today. Thank you.
Thank you. And my next speaker is councillor Tom Hunt.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and let me pay tribute to my friend Ben Curran. I think it's important to set this budget in context. These are a few headlines from the last 24 hours alone. The number of UK children in food poverty has nearly doubled in the last year to almost 4 million. Customers are warned of energy bill rises in April. Under this government, things have got tough and are getting tougher. 13 years of low growth and stagnant wages, this is a situation that many people and businesses find themselves in. So today, we put forward proposals to protect the most vulnerable and to build stronger communities, proposals to support community organisations, proposals to help people get healthy, affordable food, proposals to explore how we can improve our buses. Through this council, we'll always do what we can to help, but let's be clear, we know that we do so within this council, forced to have one hand tied behind our back, funding has lashed since 2010. So yes, we need and deserve fair funding, but as Labour councillors, we also want more powers to grow our economy so that we're not so reliant on Westminster. We need to attract inward investment, to encourage businesses to locate and grow in Sheffield, to attract more early stage finance. Sheffield is full of talent, ambition and economic potential. Great things happen here, more great things could happen here. Our proposals will help to ensure that we support people in tough times, but raise our sights and build for a better future, one that's pro worker, pro business, one that's high wage, high productivity, low carbon, low inequality, and I hope members will support us to the end.
Thank you councillor Hunt. Next, I call on councillor Mazaeek Bal.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's unbelievable that amnesia across on that side of the chamber, 13 years, not one year, not five years, but 13 years of cuts decimating not this council but public services, not just in Sheffield but across the country. And then we've got the Greens, who completely disenfranchise from the rest of us, let's continue to tax everybody as much as we can in this current climate. It's, poor, lost for words, but what I would like to say is, like every other, sorry, as we've seen across the city, the devastating cuts to our bus services, and our amendment tries to address that, so our residents don't feel like they are isolated or abandoned in their communities. Therefore, please support the amendment. We've got the Liberals saying we are on the side of businesses. I've been up to Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road, I was there this week, you've let down the businesses down there. We have gave a clear commitment that we will not extend the hours, we will not bring in the red lines, and there will be no loss of parking. The Labour Party puts its residents and its businesses and its communities first, unlike the two parties here. One wants to tax you more, the other, poor. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Hang on a moment, please. Right, my next speaker is councillor Barbara Masters.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just put the record straight? We've been working with businesses for the last months, ever since the consultation on some very positive sort of changes to the bus and traffic sequencing was announced. We haven't left it till the last week, just for electioneering purposes, we've been working with them to get, so. But to get back to the main points, I'm really pleased to see the inclusion of mine, water, heat recovery in your Labour amendments, and the nod to support our heritage parks and community assets. It's welcome, but you constantly playing the victim means you fail to capitalize on opportunities that come our way to the city. The Green Party amendments show little appreciation of financial realities and the consequences on our local businesses who are expected to pick up the tab. They already face huge challenges because of the hammer blows of Covid, the energy crisis, supply chain issues and the escalating cost of raw materials. I see nothing in the party's opposites amendments that can give our small businesses any confidence there is support for them so they can continue and thrive. Councillor Hunt talks about attracting new businesses into the city, yeah, we want that, but what about supporting those that are here already? Don't they deserve it too? They are the backbone of Sheffield's economy, and they, and they need a budget within which they can operate with confidence. There's a complete lack of trust. Our amendment shows us one party that has the financial acumen to allow them to operate and provide so many jobs which contribute to our local economy, which you want, but you cannot achieve. So it will help pay for our services. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
And if you could switch off your mic, can I? Nope, still on. And next, it's councillor Ruth Milson.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. As councillor Dunn has alluded to already, the annual attack on our trade unions is predictably present in the Liberal Democrat amendment. The alignment with the Conservative Party's line on unions also does not go unnoticed. These politicians, in my opinion, Lord Mayor, need to educate themselves. Focusing merely on the cost of facility time to propose a reduction of the subsidy is a straw man argument. The benefits fully justify the cost. Facility time saves money by avoiding very costly tribunals and providing stability. It can also bring about positive change in an organisation. Union reps are sometimes wrongly seen as merely complainers, but they will often be the instigators of change that is good for employer, employees and service users, the string pullers, you might say. At a time when we have a government actively attacking workers' rights, it is outrageous to propose further erosion. Trade unions provide protection, reassurance and independent advice to council staff. They are the last line of defence for public services and the workers who keep those going. Far from being a waste, union activities save taxpayers' money in the long run. TUC research has found before the pandemic that in the public sector, there were 8,000 to 16,000 fewer dismissals every year thanks to union reps. Union workers, unionised workers are also significantly less likely to quit. Recruiting and training new employees, as we all know, is expensive, and it's estimated that £27 to £54 million of public money is saved by reducing staff turnover. Millions of workers are being exploited, pressured to work over and above contracted hours. Public workers have been forced to industrial action because of bosses' refusal to make reasonable pay and condition settlements. It would be a twisted move indeed to cut paid union time in such a climate. The Liberal Democrats raise historic criticisms of Labour for not engaging with Sheffield residents, and yet they repeatedly attempt to carve into a long established mechanism that protects employees of this very council as though they are not also residents. Lord Mayor, they need to decide who they're standing up for.
Thank you councillor Milson. I think our employees pay taxes too. Right, next, it's councillor Mike Chaplin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to speak on two things, one which we've not mentioned yet in Labour's amendment, and that is the £300,000 on page 11 that we want to set aside to help the People Keeping Well funding, where the NHS provide the money for the workers to do the social prescribing, helping clients, it's often helping out doctors' surgeries where patients have other problems that don't require conventional medical treatment. where patients have other problems that don't require conventional medical treatment, but require other kinds of support. But what doesn't come with the NHS funding is the funding for administration, for payroll and for office space and other associated services. And the organisations that Sheffield City Council works closely with, like SOAR, ZEST, Manor Castle, they're all providing the social prescribing and they would all benefit from this. And it would probably help with expanding that vital service to people in our community. One thing I wanted to pick up from the Liberal Democrat amendment is the funding for, and it's tucked away on page 29, for community recycling and food waste collection services. I'm quite intrigued by that because it's in there with 12 other projects that you've listed. And you've set aside over a million pounds, £1,500,000 to cover all 13. So I'm very interested to know quite how you're going to make what would be an average £80,000, unless you're planning to put more in, maybe £160,000, doubling that amount. Or perhaps you've only got a small pilot of £40,000. But we had a pilot scheme earlier this year. And I see I've got to the end of my time, Lord Mayor. But I'd be very intrigued to know if there's a Liberal Democrat about to speak, whether they could explain what they're going to do with that money. Thank you.
And now I have councillor Phipps.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As we were reminded just last week, four years ago, this council declared a climate emergency. Since then, we have seen extreme heat in Sheffield and across the world, extreme flooding in Germany and Pakistan, impacts to our food supplies, Douglas mentioned earlier, and as the global south have already suffered from horrifically. Our amendment wants real action on the climate emergency, real improvement to public transport and active transport that would benefit everyone, especially those who cannot afford cars. And I'm really frustrated because after four years after the climate declaration, all we're hearing is lip service from the other groups. It's just lip service, it's blah, blah, blah. In reality, what we're seeing is a race to the bottom as both of you fight for votes in opposing progressive measures to improve active transport and public transport. And frankly, that is shameful.
Thank you, councillor Phipps. And now it's councillor Brian Lodge.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's very interesting listening to a number of speeches going on today, isn't it? When you listen to things and how they suddenly get in this Damascus moment where they put the money into the Heritage Fund that was nothing in your budget amendment last year and nothing in previous years when you were the administration. But fair dues, credit to you, you were the administration and you let the building suffer as well. So, you know, don't start turning around now and saying that you're not jumping on a bandwagon when you suddenly put it in. And all the people that are talking about Burley Spa, I bet probably 90% of you have never been or you don't even know where it is. I know you have, Brian, I've seen you down there at Burley Spa. But many of the councillors in here don't even know where it is and they wouldn't be able to find it. We've listened to things that... £50,000, you know, it's quite interesting actually. I don't know if anybody's got last year's budget amendments up. I think the Lib Dems have because they're speaking to the same things. £50,000, create a greener Sheffield fund. £50,000 to tackle what they put in again this year for the environmental issues things. Yeah, we put £500,000 last year, £500,000. Have we seen an improvement on tackling graffiti and fly posting in the city? I've come on a bus today, coming through, I get the bus in most days. I come down, I come through intake, Manor Top and down City Road, Granville Road. And all the way through, there are bins that Amy operate that are covered with graffiti and fly posting. There's boxes that are there, there are the telecoms that have got graffiti and fly posting on it. And I mentioned this in a CMT meeting back in September and officers took it away, but nothing's done. Graffiti and fly posting are forgotten under councillor Otten. Let's not forget that when you put it out there to the people. There is still graffiti. You look on Google Maps and there's pictures on Google Maps since October when I reported it, that's got graffiti on these boxes that's there to see. Do something about it, put in a proper funding and not just regurgitate last year's amendment.
I'm now going to call on councillor Gail Smith.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've never heard such hypocrisy, Brian. You talk across this chamber as if you've not been running this council for the last, God knows how many years. I want to just remind that my colleagues on that side, the reason we want to take the money from the unions and their wages is not because we don't believe in unions, but when I was, and I'm not in a union anymore because I don't work, I'm retiring, but I believe that the union money that a worker gives to the union should be the money that pays for their union representation and not the people of Sheffield. You don't understand that, you believe that we don't believe in unions, which is a load of rubbish. So please take that away and remember. And Brian, dear Brian. Let's not forget that we, the Liberal Democrats, we started the local assemblies. And if we'd have carried on, if you'd have not got rid of them 10 years ago, where would we be now in a better place than what we are? Barnsley copied what we did in Sheffield and their local area assemblies are in a better place than we are. And I also want to remind you that it wasn't the Labour Party that decided to have likes, but the people that came to this council chamber, month after month, that made us a referendum. So I thank those people because I am a Liberal Democrat and I believe in bottom-up politics and I believe in local community people making their decisions for themselves and not listening to people like you dictating what we should believe.
Right. I believe councillor Mohammed has asked to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, my microphone does work this time. I mean, councillor Brian Lodge, if you genuinely are concerned about graffiti, then I'd say to you, vote for the Liberal Democrat amendment because there's extra money in there and actually more power for you as a local councillor to deal with local parities. As councillor Smith said, remember the community assemblies? We gave power over street cleaning, libraries and parks over to councillors. Say you decide what's the most important to you, not this town hall. So if you're complaining about the town hall here not quite working, then it was you that undid it. And if you're really concerned about graffiti, speak to your colleague Mike Chaplin, you know, he's the vice chair. And you've got more people on there than us. And then just going back to what councillor Ikbal said, absolute hypocrisy. For 12 months and more, the businesses on Abidale Road, London Road and in our case Ecclesall Road have been crying out for clarity about what was going to happen with the 12-hour red lines proposals that came from the Labour-Green coalition. We were very clear, if you can't, I'll get you one of the leaflets that I was put out when I was re-elected last year that made our position very clear. If you want to go out and try to mislead people and businesses, you're going to get called out. Great, you've made the announcement eventually. But the question is, does the co-chair also agree? Because the co-chair of that committee, who's not here, the deputy leader at council, said something very, very different to the press. So it's all right, one co-chair saying one thing to a group of businesses on Monday and Tuesday, but your colleague said something else on two weeks ago. So what is it? What is the council's position? And what are the council officers' thoughts on this? Because we all would like to know, councillor Ikbal.
And finally, our last speaker is councillor Mary Lee.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just want to say, proud to have been a nurse and proud to be in unison still. Lord Mayor, what I see in Labour's amendment is a budget with ambition for the people of Sheffield, families and communities of Sheffield to get back on their feet, not just after Covid, but after many years of austerity imposed on the city by the Liberal Democrat Tory coalition. Much of this ambition for Sheffield will be delivered through our local area committees via an increase in the ward pots, help for community infrastructure, additional funding via the shared prosperity fund, extra funding to support lunchroom clubs and extra funding for people keeping well areas. But it is now time to move on and to take our ambitions further by developing powers across the Lax areas. Sorry, I'm going to have to start again, I've missed a bit. Lord Mayor, Lax are now well established in our communities. We engage with local people, not just at public meetings, but in roadshows, days of action where we knock on doors and speak to people and in multiple conversations we have day to day and week to week. But it is now time to move on and take our ambitions further by devolving powers across the Lax. And this is the next place, this is the next piece of their development and our ambition. So not just increased spending locally, but funding support for neighbourhood action groups, housing advisory panels, additional community safety measures for our young people, highway schemes at a local level. And this will be a greater say to local people for fulfilling the fundamental aims of the Lax to engage, empower and enable people and communities at a local level. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Right, can I just, oh, Mary, can you? Can I just thank everybody for that debate? We are five minutes ahead of schedule. So, thank you all very much for mostly keeping to time. And I now offer a right of reply to the mover of the motion, councillor Terry Fox. And he will have up to two minutes to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just wanted to put on record the achievements that have gone on this year. So I've listened to the backwards and forwards of parties, et cetera, on the amendments. And anybody listening in would think we have done nothing this year. Lord Mayor, I'd just like to put on record what we have achieved this year as local councillors and as committees. Lord Mayor, we put 1.2 million into the investment through Pons Forge. We've put 2.8 million into the Woodburn Road football pitches. We've put over 200K into recreational improvements in Exeter Drive, Wazle Park Village, Sycamore Park, Woodseats Playground, Anghram Bank, Millhouses Park, Chambers Valley Road, Rivlin Valley, Cardwall, Bowls Recreation, Mount Pleasant Park. We've put 420 into Oldsbury Park Access and Drainage Road, Mayor. Millhouses Park, 350,000 into cricket. Mother Road Play and Environment, 192,000. Sports and physical activity projects, Lord Mayor, at Parsons Cross Pavilion project. We've also put the courts in across at the 3G courts and also replacement cremators at City Road of over 2.8 million pounds. Lord Mayor, we've downloaded 3.4 million into general cemetery phase two work. Our green and open spaces projects of over half a million pounds, improvements enhancing our recreational facilities and a million pounds, Lord Mayor, into Parkwood Springs Academy and Irving Country Park. Lord Mayor, we've also tackled the big problems of climate change. Of over 801,000 tonnes of CO2, the equivalent to 35,000, with continuation of the economic renewal front into green projects in our district centres. We've put low-carbon business support projects in through the European Regional. We've gone the Jessica Fund, Lord Mayor, into across this city to bring excellent ratings and a development of a grant programme for energy efficiency measures in the community and cultural buildings across. So don't let anybody think that we've just stood still, Lord Mayor. We have done some cracking work, work to continue, Lord Mayor. And I just want to promote going through into this budget. But I have to once say, Lord Mayor, that when people say that we are not around for business, Art of the City One was opposed and is being delivered promoting jobs. When everybody lessed us on our own, it was this council that stood up and put 423 million into Art of the City Two for our residents on footfall, on residential, on businesses and that and retail. Lord Mayor, that shows the commitment of all of us in Sheffield. Let's not talk Sheffield down, Lord Mayor, let's talk Sheffield up. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Right, I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number one, which was moved by councillor Brian Lodge. And this will be recorded via a roll call conducted by the interim director of legal and governance. I think some of our members here have only ever done voting electronically or silently. So we have a roll call and you call your vote when your name is called. Who do I hand over to? Oh, hang on, it says here, I've got to pause for a few seconds to give you a short period of time to prepare for the vote. So can I ask that members remain silent while the roll call is being conducted, except to clearly state... Yeah, I don't know, if you want to go limber up with a bit of Tai Chi. So can you all remain silent, which I realise is terribly hard for all of us, except to clearly state your vote upon hearing your name? Right, everybody's sitting down. Okay, David, can you please commence the vote on amendment number one?
The Lord Mayor, councillor Sean Ed Richards.
Four.
The Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Colin Ross. Simon Clement Jones.
Against.
Richard Shaw. Sophie Thornton.
Against.
Bob McCann. Sorry, Bob McCann's given his apologies yet. Curtis Crossland.
Against.
Anne Woolhouse.
Against.
Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argenzio.
Against.
Brian Holmshaw.
Against.
Talib Hussain. Sophia Said.
Four.
Douglas Johnson.
Against.
Ruth Mercero.
Against.
Martin Phipps.
Against.
Tim Huggan.
Against.
Minesh Parek.
Four.
Ruth Milsom.
Four.
Mazza Ikbal.
Four.
Mary Lee.
Four.
Sahira Nas. Jo Otten.
Against.
Martin Smith.
Against.
Victoria Bowden.
Against.
Craig Gamble-Pew.
Four.
Alan Woodcock.
Against.
Roger Davison.
Against.
Barbara Masters. Shefak Mohammed.
Against.
Fran Belbin.
Four.
Abdul Kayum.
Four.
Abtisam Mohammed.
Four.
Sue Alston.
Against.
Andrew Sangar.
Against.
Cliff Woodcraft.
Against.
Alexi Diamond.
Against.
Marie-Anne Elliott.
Against.
Paul Turpin.
Against.
Ian Auckland.
Against.
Sue Auckland.
Against.
Dee Varys.
Against.
Christine Gilligan.
Against.
George Lindars-Hammond.
Four.
Henry Nottage.
Against.
Terry Fox.
Four.
Tony Downing.
Four.
Kevin Oxley.
Against.
Gail Smith.
Against.
Marouf Ralph. Marouf Ralph. Nigat Basharat.
Four.
Ben Miskel.
Four.
Nabila Molana.
Four.
David Barker.
Four.
Mike Drabble.
Four.
Diane Hurst.
Four.
Dawn Dale.
Four.
Peter Price.
Four.
Gary Weatherall.
Four.
Mike Chaplin.
Four.
Tony Dams.
Four.
Jane Dunn.
Four.
Penny Baker.
Against.
Vicky Priestley.
Against.
Richard Williams.
Against.
Lewis Chinchin.
Against.
Janet Riddler.
Four.
Ben Curran.
Four.
Tom Hunt.
Four.
Bernard Little.
Against.
Alan Hooper.
Against.
Mike Leverie.
Against.
Anne Whittaker.
Against.
Jackie Satter.
Four.
Paul Wood.
Four.
Right, and the result is that vote is lost, 35 for, 41 against and no abstentions. Thank you. We'll now move on to the vote on amendment number two, which was moved by councillor Mike Leverie. And this will again be a recorded vote via a roll call. Now, do I need to give you a pause to prepare yourselves or are you okay? Right, in which case just remain silent whilst the roll call's being called, except to clearly state your vote when you hear your name. Thank you. David, please commence the vote on amendment number two.
The Lord Mayor, councillor Sean Ed Richards.
Against.
Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Colin Ross.
Four.
Simon Clement Jones.
Four.
Richard Shaw.
Four.
Sophie Thornton.
Four.
Curtis Crossland.
Four.
Anne Woolhouse.
Four.
Denise Fox.
Against.
Brian Lodge.
Against.
Karen McGowan.
Against.
Angela Argenzio.
Against.
Brian Holmshaw.
Against.
Talib Hussain.
Against.
Sophia Said.
Against.
Douglas Johnson.
Against.
Ruth Mercero.
Against.
Martin Phipps.
Against.
Tim Huggan.
Four.
Minesh Parek.
Against.
Ruth Milsom.
Against.
Mazza Igbal.
Against.
Mary Lee.
Against.
Zahira Naz.
Against.
Joe Otten.
Four.
Martin Smith.
Four.
Victoria Bowden.
Four.
Craig Gamble-Pew.
Against.
Alan Woodcock.
Four.
Roger Davison.
Four.
Barbara Masters.
Four.
Shefak Mohammed.
Four.
Fran Belbin.
Against.
Abdul Kayum.
Against.
Abtisam Mohammed.
Against.
Sue Alston.
Four.
Andrew Sangar.
Four.
Cliff Woodcraft.
Four.
Alexi Diamond.
Against.
Marie-Anne Elliott.
Against.
Paul Turpin.
Against.
Ian Auckland.
Four.
Sue Auckland.
Four.
Steve Ayres.
Four.
Christine Gilligan.
Against.
George Lindars-Hammond.
Against.
Henry Notteich.
Against.
Terry Fox.
Against.
Tony Downing.
Against.
Kevin Oxley.
Four.
Gail Smith.
Four.
Marouf Ralph. Nigat Basharat.
Against.
Ben Miskel.
Against.
Nabila Molana.
Against.
David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst.
Against.
Dawn Dale.
Against.
Peter Price.
Against.
Gary Weatherall.
Against.
Mike Chaplin.
Against.
Tony Dams.
Against.
Jane Dunn. Penny Baker.
Four.
Vicky Priestley.
Four.
Richard Williams.
Four.
Lewis Chinchin.
Against.
Janet Riddler.
Against.
Ben Curran.
Against.
Tom Hunt.
Against.
Bernard Little.
Against.
Alan Hooper.
Four.
Mike Leverie.
Four.
Anne Whittaker.
Four.
Jackie Satter.
Against.
Paul Wood.
Against.
And we have the result here, that amendment was also lost, 28 for, 48 against with no abstentions. Thank you. So we now go on to amendment three, which was moved by councillor Douglas Johnson, which will be recorded via a roll call. Just doing my pause for you, Marie-Anne, so you can do your exercises. Right, can I remind members to remain silent while the roll call's being taken, except to clearly state your vote upon hearing your name? Thank you. David, would you like to commence the vote on amendment number three, please?
The Lord Mayor, councillor Sean Ed Richards.
Against.
Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Colin Ross.
Against.
Simon Clement Jones.
Against.
Richard Shaw.
Against.
Sophie Thornton.
Against.
Curtis Crossland.
Against.
Anne Woolhouse.
Against.
Denise Fox.
Against.
Brian Lodge.
Against.
Karen McGowan.
Against.
Angela Argenzio.
Four.
Brian Holmshaw.
Four.
Talib Hussain.
Against.
Sophia Said.
Against.
Douglas Johnson.
Four.
Ruth Mercero. Martin Phipps.
Four.
Tim Huggan.
Against.
Minesh Parek.
Against.
Ruth Milsom.
Against.
Mazza Igbal.
Against.
Mary Lee. Zahira Naz. Joe Otten.
Against.
Martin Smith.
Against.
Victoria Bowden.
Against.
Craig Gamble-Pew.
Against.
Alan Woodcock.
Against.
Roger Davison.
Against.
Barbara Masters.
Against.
Shefak Mohammed.
Against.
Fran Belbin.
Against.
Abdul Kayum.
Against.
Abtisam Mohammed.
Against.
Sue Alston.
Against.
Andrew Sangar.
Against.
Cliff Woodcraft.
Against.
Alexi Diamond.
Four.
Marie-Anne Elliott.
Four.
Paul Turpin.
Four.
Ian Auckland.
Against.
Sue Auckland.
Against.
Steve Ayres.
Against.
Christine Gilligan.
Four.
George Lindars-Hammond.
Against.
Henry Notteich.
Four.
Terry Fox.
Against.
Tony Downing.
Against.
Kevin Oxley.
Against.
Gail Smith.
Against.
Marouf Ralph. Nigat Basharat.
Against.
Ben Miskel.
Against.
Nabila Molana.
Against.
David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst.
Against.
Dawn Dale.
Against.
Peter Price.
Against.
Gary Weatherall.
Against.
Mike Chaplin.
Against.
Tony Dams.
Against.
Jane Dunn.
Against.
Penny Baker.
Against.
Vicky Priestley.
Against.
Richard Williams.
Against.
Lewis Chinchin.
Against.
Janet Riddler.
Against.
Ben Curran.
Against.
Tom Hunt.
Against.
Bernard Little.
Four.
Alan Hooper.
Sorry, against.
Mike Leverie.
Against.
Anne Whittaker.
Against.
Jackie Satter.
Against.
Paul Wood.
Against.
Right, thank you, colleagues, we have the result. That amendment was also lost, four, 12 against, 64 and no abstentions. I'm now going to move to the vote on the amendment number four, moved by councillor Lewis Chinchin and seconded by the Lord Mayor. And we're going to record it via a roll call. I shall pause for a minute for everybody to have a period of time to prepare for the vote. A bit of Tai Chi, everybody. And can I remind you that you're to remain silent while the roll call is being conducted, except to clearly state your vote upon hearing your name? Thank you. Okay, one more time. We have to have a recorded vote and that's how it's done. And as we know, the Greens don't have a whip, so we wouldn't know how you were all voting. I don't believe you. Right. David, please commence the vote on amendment number four.
The Lord Mayor, councillor Sean Ed Richards.
Against.
The Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Colin Ross.
Against.
Simon Clement Jones.
Against.
Richard Shaw.
Against.
Sophie Thornton.
Against.
Curtis Crossland.
Against.
Anne Woolhouse.
Against.
Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argenzio.
Against.
Brian Holmshaw.
Against.
Talib Hussain. Sophia Said.
Against.
Douglas Johnson.
Against.
Ruth Mercero. Martin Phipps.
Against.
Tim Huggan.
Against.
Minesh Parek.
Against.
Ruth Milsom.
Against.
Mazza Igbal.
Against.
Mary Lee. Zahira Naz. Joe Otten.
Against.
Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Craig Gamble-Pew.
Against.
Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shefak Mohammed.
Against.
Fran Belbin. Abdul Kayum.
Against.
Abtisam Mohammed.
Against.
Sue Alston.
Against.
Andrew Sangar. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexi Diamond. Marie-Anne Elliott.
Against.
Paul Turpin. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland.
Against.
Steve Ayres.
Against.
Christine Gilligan. George Lindars-Hammond. Henry Notteich. Terry Fox.
Against.
Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Gail Smith. Marouf Ralph. Nigat Basharat. Ben Miskel.
Against.
Nabila Molana.
Against.
David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst.
Against.
Dawn Dale.
Against.
Peter Price. Gary Weatherall.
Against.
Mike Chaplin.
Against.
Tony Dams.
Against.
Jane Dunn.
Against.
Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams.
Against.
Lewis Chinchin.
Four.
Janet Riddler.
Against.
Ben Curran. Tom Hunt.
Against.
Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leverie. Anne Whittaker. Jackie Satter. Paul Wood.
Against.
Right, that amendment was lost with, with 1 for and 75 against. I would just tell Lewis that when I was first in Labour Group, I used to regularly lose votes, 59-1, unless Martin Lawton was sitting next to me at the back of group and he'd take pity and he'd vote so that I only lost 58-2. At least your group is solid there. Whoa, well, we appear to have lost all the amendments. I don't know what to do.
Lord Mayor.[1653.62]
Lord Mayor.
Oh, leader.
Can I suggest a five-minute adjournment, just so that we can kind of circulate and let members of council just come together with an agreement to go forward? Is that okay, Lord Mayor?
It would be great if you were able to arrange it, thank you leader.
I will try my best, Lord Mayor, thank you.
We'll have a five-minute adjournment then. Leaders of groups into the anteroom with councillor Fox, please. No, it's okay because Angela sorted it. Miraculously, colleagues, we do appear to have some agreement that we've all come to, taking the best bit, I think, out of each amendment. And we appear to have a fifth amendment here. Under the provisions of Council Procedure Rule 11A, Roman numeral two, I believe we have to have the seeking of permission for an additional amendment to be considered at the meeting. This procedural motion will need to be moved and seconded and then voted on by a show of hands. If this motion is passed, a short adjournment may be required to enable officers to distribute the amendment within the council chamber, or at least give us time to read it. So, can I ask councillor Mary Lee? I know, is that just... Do I just... Hold on. Okay, can I call upon councillor Hurst to propose the procedural motion?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
And can I ask councillor Jo Otten to second it?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Right, and we're back at yes, oh, hang on. Are you all agreed on that, or do you need a moment to prepare yourselves? Great. You should all have a copy of this amendment. Has everybody got a copy? And shall we have three minutes to make jokes about the fifth amendment and how we're going to plead? Or shall we simply carry on? Okay, you know, I didn't want to spoil it if anybody wanted to say. Right, can I call on councillor Mary Lee to formally move this latest amendment, number five?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Labour has a commitment and a mission that the Lacks will deliver for local people and communities. We think that by having more local funding will enable those small organisations we support to flourish and help to deliver for local people's priorities. I'm sorry our amendment didn't succeed, however, having this extra funding for each ward and extra funding for those parts of the city in most need and where family resources are tight will help towards delivering for local communities and people. I know that the Lib Dems like ourselves are committed to devolution of powers to a local level and we have committed to do this and the work has started. First working with our parks services, youth services and delivering small highway schemes locally. So I'm sure this will go on, will go further over time. As a group, as a group of lack chairs, we work well together and we learn from each other and we seek the best for our communities in whatever part of the city. We agree that there are, there is more, we agree more than we disagree and we share good practice along the way. I'm happy to propose this fifth amendment. Quite, doesn't sound quite right, but anyway, I'm happy to propose this fifth amendment and hope that we can all get behind it and vote in a positive way.
Thank you councillor Lee. I'm now going to call upon councillor Andrew Sanger to second the amendment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I think it's really good that the parties have come together and found a way to suggest an amendment which will get wider, wider support. I mean, we have put in the office of support for local area committees, we've had a year of having the community fund and this way, if this amendment gets through across the city, all the Lacks will have another £100,000. So that's really good news in terms of empowering communities to take, to get more involved in terms of delivering better services for the people across Sheffield. All eighty-four councillors are involved in the Lacks, I think this is a good suggestion. I think it would be really important though to take this opportunity to say to our colleagues on Finance Committee, let's mainstream this next year, let's make sure that Lacks funding is agreed in the main budget rather than this extra one. It's disappointing we've had to do it, but it's really important at this last moment, this eleventh hour, we agree this. And, and Lord Mayor, the other part of this budget is about the cost of living crisis because clearly people across Sheffield are struggling. We've had seventeen percent inflation in terms of food prices, we've had electricity and gas bills trembling, we've got lots of people across this city really struggling. And it's right that this extra £400,000 goes across the city in terms of, and is distributed according to poverty levels across the city. Lord Mayor, there is this extra money, we've all had the argument about our own budget, members, but this final one, I hope we can get unanimity and agreement to get this amendment across the chamber today. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sanger. Jo, I assume you're now going to be filming councillor Argentio in your role as... Filmer to the stars? Okay. And to third this motion, this amendment, can I call upon councillor Argentio?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I'll just be very brief. I just want to say thank you to colleagues in the Labour Group and the Lib Dem Group to propose an amendment that we can all get behind. I think it's particularly important to fund the local communities and I am particularly pleased with the fact that the extra £400,000 is going to be distributed according to the index of multiple deprivation because we need to really get behind trying to tackle inequalities in the city and we need to put the money where it's most needed, which is in the most deprived areas of the city. Thank you.
Councillor Chinchin, would you like to say anything in this outbreak of unanimity?
I'll keep it brief because a lot of it's already been said, but of course, I will be supporting this.
Stand up!
My mistake, Lord Mayor. I will be supporting this amendment, obviously it's about local decision-making, more localised power and communities having a greater say in decision-making, so it's of course something that I will support. It's good to see the ring-fenced cost of living amount in there as well and also the reference to service redesigns, so perhaps we can ensure that we are maximising the value of Lacks and the value of that spending through that redesign. So it's a positive cross-party amendment and I will be supporting it, thank you.
I'm now going to move to a vote on the amendment number five, which was moved by councillor Lee, which will be recorded via a roll call conducted by the interim director of legal and governance. I shall pause for a few seconds to give members a short period of time to prepare for their vote. Can I ask that members remain silent while the roll call is being conducted, except to clearly state their vote upon hearing their name? Thank you. We all ready? David, please commence the vote on amendment number five.
The Lord Mayor, councillor Sean Ed Richards.
Four.
The Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Colin Ross.
Four.
Simon Clement Jones.
Four.
Richard Shaw.
Four.
Sophie Thornton.
Four.
Curtis Crossland.
Four.
Anne Woolhouse.
Four.
Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argentio.
Four.
Brian Holmshaw.
Four.
Talib Hussain. Sophia Said.
Four.
Douglas Johnson.
Four.
Ruth Mercero. Martin Phipps. Tim Huggan. Minesh Parak.
Four.
Ruth Milsom.
Four.
Mazza Igbal. Mary Lee. Zahira Naz. Jo Otten. Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Craig Gamble-Pew.
Four.
Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed.
Four.
Fran Belbin. Abdul Kajum.
Four.
Abtisam Mohammed.
Four.
Sue Olston. Andrew Sanger. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexey Diamond. Marianne Elliott.
Four.
Paul Turpin. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland.
Four.
Steve Ayres.
Four.
Christine Gilligan. George Lindars-Hammond. Henry Notteich. Terry Fox. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Gail Smith. Marouf Ralph. Nigat Basharat.
Four.
Ben Miskel.
Four.
Nabila Molana.
Four.
David Barker. Mike Trabbell. Diane Hurst.
Four.
Dawn Dale.
Four.
Peter Price. Gary Weatherall.
Four.
Mike Chaplin.
Four.
Tony Dams.
Four.
Jane Dunn. Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams. Lewis Chinchin. Janet Ridley. Ben Curran. Tom Hunt.
Four.
Bernard Little.
Four.
Alan Hooper. Mike Leverie. Anne Whittaker. Jackie Satter. Paul Wood.
Four.
Can you switch off Paul's mic? Right. And the result is, this was carried, seventy-six, four, none against and no abstentions. So I declare that we now have an amendment that's passed and that now becomes the substantive motion. And I'm now going to move to a vote on this substantive motion, which will be recorded via a roll call conducted by the director of legal and governance. This is the last, come on, you all know how to do it now and it's the last one, apart from some voting on some other things which won't be the roll call. Okay, David, please commence the vote on the substantive motion.
The Lord Mayor, councillor Sean Ed Richards.
Four.
The Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Colin Ross. Simon Clement Jones.
Four.
Richard Shaw. Sophie Thornton.
Four.
Curtis Crossland. Anne Woolhouse. Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argentio. Brian Holmshaw.
Four.
Talib Hussain. Sophia Said. Douglas Johnson. Ruth Mercero. Martin Phipps. Tim Huggan. Minesh Parak. Ruth Milsom. Mazza Igbal. Mary Lee. Zahira Naz. Jo Otten. Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Craig Gamble-Pew. Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed. Fran Belbin. Abdul Kajum. Abtisam Mohammed. Sue Olston. Andrew Sanger. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexey Diamond. Marianne Elliott. Paul Turpin. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland. Steve Ayres. Christine Gilligan. George Lindars-Hammond. Henry Notteich. Terry Fox. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Gail Smith. Marouf Ralph. Nigat Basharat. Ben Miskel. Nabila Molana. David Barker. Mike Trabbell. Diane Hurst. Dawn Dale. Peter Price. Gary Weatherall. Mike Chaplin. Tony Dams. Jane Dunn. Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams. Lewis Chinchin. Janet Ridley. Ben Curran. Tom Hunt. Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leverie. Anne Whittaker. Jackie Satter. Paul Wood.
Right, colleagues, here we have the substantive motion and it's been agreed, seventy-six, four, none against and no abstentions. So we do have a budget for next year. Thank you all very much, we still have items on our agenda to go, I'm afraid. So, item number eight, memberships of council bodies and representatives to serve on other bodies. It's moved by councillor Diane Hurst, seconded by councillor Jo Otten, that approval be given to the changes in the memberships of committees and other council bodies and the appointment of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule circulated at the meeting. Councillor Hurst.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Otten.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
I'm now going to move to a vote on the motion, is the motion agreed? Right, that motion is carried. Thank you. I have an item of urgent business, which is item number nine, members allowances.
Lord Mayor, sorry, I feel I need to declare an interest for this item since I would be the beneficiary of this, so I shall not vote on the item under the guidance of the head of legal.
Yes, Lord Mayor, we've considered it and because this is in isolation with somebody in post already, rather than doing it generally when we do it at the annual general meeting, we feel that there is a non-registerable personal interest here. I have given councillor Milsom dispensation to remain in the room though.
Right, isn't the Ruth Milsom, what shall we call it though, is it remuneration? It is one that will be passed on, it's not hers in perpetuity. Right, so... Sorry about that, Ruth. Okay, let's start this again. Council Procedure Rule twenty-six states that an item of business may be considered at a meeting of the council as a matter of urgency where it has not been possible to give five clear working days' notice. That's on the recommendation of the chair, but the reason for such urgency must be recorded in the minutes. So it's proposed that the council considers the recommendations made by the independent remuneration panel... Sorry. ...in relation to the introduction of a new special responsibility allowance within the members allowances scheme. The independent panel met three working days prior to the publication of the agenda for this meeting and this had not provided sufficient time for officers to complete the necessary liaison with all the political groups on the council prior to the publication of the agenda. To not deal with the matter as an urgent item of business at this meeting would delay the business for more than two months until the next scheduled council meeting. A report on this matter has been produced and was circulated on Monday to members of the council and has now been published on the council's website. Copies of the report are available in the council chamber and public gallery. Right, so the motion is to approve the recommendations made by the independent remuneration panel to introduce a special responsibility allowance for the Chair of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee and any additional subcommittees that may be established as detailed in a report of the interim director of legal and governance previously circulated. The motion is to be moved by councillor Diane Hurst and seconded by councillor Martin Phipps. So councillor Hurst.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Phipps.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
I'm now going to move to vote on the motion, is the motion agreed? I will take silence as the affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. Okay, that motion is carried unanimously. Yep, so we're down on this bit here, right. We're coming to the, that concludes the official business of the meeting. But what I do want to note is that we have got, this is our last meeting before the elections in May and we do know that we have members... and we do know that we have members who are voluntarily stepping down. So I would just like to place on record our thanks to councillor Sue Auckland, Vic Bowden, Kevin Oxley, Jackie Sato, Bob McCann, Ben Curran and Peter Garbutt. So can I have unanimous agreement? Thank you. I'm just going to ask the leader to briefly mention the fact that he and I last week went on an excursion to Deppist Woodhouse and Hansworth in order to see the sculpture which is being put together for our Covid remembrance.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Been all doing this. For any member who would wish to go and see it, it is a local firm down at Hansworth called Steel Line. They are fabricating such a wonderful, wonderful sculpture for our Covid memorial, which is a four-foot willow tree. And you can see how they're making it in stainless steel and it's going to be an absolute wonderful sculpture and remembrance for the city. We will be unveiling it on the twenty-third. I think every member has been invited to that Covid Memorial Day, but there is an invite to go now. And when you talk to the people who are making it, you can feel the passion that they've got in putting this together and fabricating it. You will start seeing it very shortly at Barn Green. It will be getting built very, very shortly, early in March. So I was just wondering for members, if you see that ongoing, they're doing the work in the Barn Green at the moment and you're able to walk inside the tree and in there there will be an opportunity for people to leave messages and to try and get some closure on their grief, obviously which they weren't allowed through Covid. So I would recommend as many members could get there. Lord Mayor, before I do sit down and I ever got this opportunity, I'd like to thank you for your year in chairing us. Not only through, obviously, keeping us all in order and myself personally, probably councillor, in fact, as well as keeping us in check, but also for the work you've done and we've heard today on just some of the feedback from the children. But also on a ward colleague basis, the work that you've done as Lord Mayor and also in the ward cannot go unrecognized. And obviously, the horrendous situation we had in Lubesin Hand as well on top of that and the way you've handled that through the chair, Lord Mayor, I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the council and thank you for your year. And I look forward to probably the same treatment from our deputy, which will then be the Lord Mayor next year. But thank you, Lord Mayor.
I would just like to say that anybody who has been Lord Mayor knows that this is the most terrifying of all the responsibilities of being Lord Mayor. I'm usually awake by about four o'clock every full council meeting, fretting because it's just so daunting when you're up here. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who has actually behaved wonderfully this year and made chairing not as awful as I expected it to be. But I have to say special, enormous, bigly huge thanks to Mr Robinson here, who has kept me unstuck. And with that, thank you, that's all the official business. Thank you all for your attendance, safe journey home.